Call to order the January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelve, two thousand twenty orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty, A, section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteenth, two thousand twenty order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted by a remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public. Excuse me, and or parties with the right. Acquire to attend the meeting can be found on the town's website at www dot north Andover MA dot gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch may do so on their televisions by tuning into Comcast Channel eight or Verizon Channel twenty-six or online at www dot north Andover cam dot org. No in-person attendance and members of the public or members of the board will be permitted, and every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. In the event that we are unable to do so despite our best efforts, we will post on the town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript or other comprehensive record of proceeding as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in public hearings, please email your question comment prior to or during the meeting to J E N R I G H T at north Andover MA dot gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceeding and reporting responded to accordingly. Okay. So it looks like we have two public hearings that were continuing. And then a few discussion items. So let's just start at the top. Continued public hearing through Gray Pond Road, Elaine Finnberry. Application for a site plan review special permit under Article eight, part three and Article ten, one ninety-five, ten point seven of the North Andover zoning by law. The applicant proposes the decree creative reuse and conversion of the Grange Hall in the old center to a three residential units, construction of retaining walls, stormwater management and creation of associated parking spaces. No exterior alterations are proposed. The parcel is located within the residential three zoning district. I also have to say that pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelve, two thousand twenty orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty, A, section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteenth, two thousand twenty order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that make out there one place. This public hearing of the North Andover Planning Board relative to three Gray Pond Road will be conducted by our remote participation. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with the right and or requirement to attend. This public hearing can be found on the town's website, www dot north Andover MA dot gov. Members of the public who wish to watch the hearing or listen to the hearing may do so on their televisions by turning to Comcast Channel eight, Verizon Channel twenty-six or www dot north Andover cam dot org on your computer or phone. No in-person attendance and members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. If we're unable to do so, we'll post on the town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, a transcript or other comprehensive record as soon as possible. If any members of the public would like to participate in this public hearing regarding three Gray Pond Road, please email your question or comment meeting to J E N R I G H T J N right at north Andover MA dot gov. Question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. Okay, three Gray Pond Road.
Good evening. Attorney Andrew Caffrey Jr. representing the applicants on this. I'm afraid we've got a request of this board and a further continuance. We are still working around some concerns that the zoning board raised regarding backing out on to Gray Pond Road. And we had gone through one iteration of a possible way to resolve that which had a roadway going around the building, but that involved too much work with the conservation department and getting too close to the wetlands. So we're now working on a proposal that would have the driveway limited to the right side of the building and provide the parking spaces out back. But at this point, it's just in concept and we're next before the zoning board, I believe, on February ninth. So we're hoping to be ready to do a regular presentation for them and ask them for their approval at that point. So if we could continue this to the next planning board meeting after February ninth, we would appreciate that.
Okay, well, that makes things a lot easier. Okay. Um, and good job working with all the different boards to try to get things in line. February twenty-third, is that correct, Jean?
Yes.
Okay, we will continue this public hearing until February twenty-third.
Appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Four nineteen and four thirty-five Andover Street, Crosspoint Associates. One more time pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelve, two thousand twenty orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty, A, section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteenth, two thousand twenty order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. Public hearing of the North Andover Planning Board relative to four nineteen and four thirty-five Andover Street will be conducted by a remote participation. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation may be found at the town website, www dot north Andover MA dot gov. Members of the public who wish to watch or listen may do so on their televisions by turning to Comcast Channel later Verizon Channel twenty-six or go online to www dot north Andover cam dot org. No in-person attendance and members of the public of the applicant or members of the board will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. In the event that we are unable to do so, we will post on the town of North Andover an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in this public hearing relative to four nineteen and four thirty-five Andover Street, please email your question or comment prior to our, prior to or during the meeting to Jean and write at J E N R I G H T at north Andover MA dot gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. Then this is application for site plan review special permit under Article eight, part three, including parking special permit under Article one, Article ten, one ninety-five, ten point seven. Applicant proposes to redevelop the properties located four nineteen and four thirty-five Andover Street by demolishing the existing Ethan Allen and Bliss Spa and Salon and Building and constructing two smaller buildings with total square footage of ten thousand eight fifty-two square feet to house new commercial tenants. Four businesses are proposed on the property, the existing Bertucci's, a coffee shop, a medical office and a bank. Both the coffee shop and bank are proposed to have drive-through operations. The proposed design includes new site lights throughout the property as well as an outdoor patio adjacent to the coffee shop. The installation of an improved stormwater mitigation system and improved landscaping on site. All parcels are located in the general business zone. Okay, Jean, where do we leave off? I think we're almost ready to wrap this one up, I believe.
Yeah, although we do have one little curveball for tonight to
Of course we do.
Yes, so the draft decision reviewed at the last meeting has been modified to reflect the board's discussion. In essence, the traffic review, the drive-through monitoring, the civil review for the existing ADA spaces at Bertucci's. The applicant has requested that the project engineer be allowed to perform the construction monitoring services. My sense of the board was that it would be allowed if acceptable language could be agreed upon. The applicant has submitted a redlined independent monitor form for your consideration. In regards to your questions related to Bertucci's, the building commissioner has communicated that he has not received past complaints. The existing ADA spaces comply and he does not feel that the new construction will create a traffic flow problem for Bertucci's and that construction activities did not create a safety issue with the implementation of proper barriers and signage. Since the last meeting, the applicant has asked for some flexibility in terms of whether combining the lots would be required. To date, it has been understood that they would be combined and that the draft decision included a condition requiring the submission of an approval of an A and R application and plan. In the draft decision you'll see tonight, I've included alternative language for your review and consideration that would allow for not combining the lots, however conditioning. Certainly the, the A and R would not be required. However, in discussions with the applicant, I've informed them that a special permit for a common driveway would be required. And so I would suggest that you may want to consider conditioning that if you're comfortable enough to move forward tonight on the draft decision. We did that recently with the Brooks School application when it was determined at the last minute really that they needed a common driveway as well.
Jean, uh, just, it's, I'm not totally clear what that all means. Are you saying the applicant doesn't want to divide the lots?
So currently there are two separate lots, one for the Ethan Allen Building and one for Bertucci's. The original application contemplated combining the two into one lot under one ownership. They've asked for consideration to allow for them remaining as separate lots and not requiring an A and R.
So, does that mean that all the buildings meet all the setback requirements if they were separate?
So they, I asked for that information late today, and so I have received a zoning table that does indicate based on their engineering that they would still be in compliance with zoning. Again, I would suggest that maybe a condition is put in place that the zoning commissioner has to confirm that they comply with zoning prior to a building permit.
Yeah, I mean
There are existing lots today and they're proposing to remain in the same configuration, but you're right, the building's being demolished into the ones
I think this is a lot different than the Brooks thing because the Brooks thing was two lots remotely located, but the problem here is in addition to the need for a special permit, it's like, I mean, practically speaking, there's no difference between the two parcels. Parking is going to flow from one to the other in multiple different places. I mean, do they need cross easements and stuff like that? I mean, what if at some point in time the, the properties get conveyed separately and somebody decides to put a fence up?
So as part of the original application, they requested the common parking special permit, which is part of the existing draft decision. And then a condition of a special permit for a common driveway requires those easement documents be provided to us. And so that would certainly be conditioned upon that special permit. And like I said, I would condition prior to a building permit that they would have to obtain that special permit.
But it's not a common driver, it's a parking lot.
Well, there's all kinds of access drives to each parking lot that they're going to share.
Well, that's the point. It's more than just a single car. I mean, I, I guess I would have just want to know the logic of why the, the lots can't be consolidated. What's the compelling reason to keep them separate?
Right, so I'll turn it over to their attorney.
Well, let me take, let me, this is Ethan, I just wanted to, I, I share the concern because it seems like we've been really thinking about this whole thing as one kind of project and how everything would flow together. And we got bunches of requests about, you know, don't change this and the Bertucci's because of the effects that they've had. And I think we've been really thinking about it as one joint project and it, I'm leery of not having them under kind of one umbrella. I think it limits our abilities later on if something goes wrong or if things change to come back. Because if they're not the same and we find that there's queuing on one side, but the solution is, okay, go through the Bertucci's parking lot and now they're not in the same ownership. I feel like we're more limited. So, and then that's just a gut reaction just because this is kind of coming at the, so I'd also, Attorney Johnson, like to hear why the change, because it
So, uh, this, this is John with Crosspoint, and I think I can answer that question. So currently the two lot are under completely separate ownership and obviously share the parking between the two lots. We had two separate purchase and sale agreements between the two ownership groups. Unfortunately, the, the Bertucci's purchase and sale agreement economically is not making any sense for us at this point. However, we have come to terms with them on creating the, the project site plan. Changes together as to, as to making the, you know, the, the parking lot, the parking lot changes and we still make sense of the Ethan Allen portion. So again, the, you know, we will continue to share the parking, we will have a common driveway, but the, the Bertucci's piece will continue to remain under the current ownership of the current Bertucci's ownership, which is the Thompson Restaurant Group, Inc.
Well, are they part of this application?
They have signed their consent to the application, yes. In fact, you have, you have conditions in there that they have to sign. All owners have to sign on to the drainage plan. That is a condition already in the decision.
And they will also be a party to the special permit common driveway application that we move forward with as well.
I mean, I, speaking is one, I'm not ready to vote on this tonight until I see the plans with the lot lines and how this special permit's going to be constructed because it's more than the driveway. It was just driveway that was shared for a piece and that was it. I, I'd be more inclined to do it, but given how extensive I think the interaction between the two lots are, I, I definitely would want to see what it looks like before we decide to vote.
Would, well, what if, John, just, would you be comfortable voting as is with it, with the requirement of one, of it being under one lot?
Oh, yeah, I, I definitely would have, or a single lot, I would say, yeah. Uh, no problem because that's what I thought it was going to be. It's, if it's not going to be one lot, I, I want to see practically speaking how it would work and all the adverse consequences would be before we approved it.
Well, what, what is it that you'd like to see? Because the plans that we have submitted show the two lot lines, show the two lots.
Well, if the bridge has now submitted half the two lots and it shows on the plan, I'd like a chance to look at it and see all the different points. Because if you were applied for a common driveway special permit, where's the common driveway? Where's the layout of the common driveway, I guess? Oh, what I'm worried about is if it's two lots, what if Bertucci's gets tired and decides not to let parking on their property or, or they decide not to, to let access over part of their property? I mean,
I think that's, so the, the previous site plans did show the, the lot lines and, and the setbacks. So the, the updated plan revises the, the zoning table to address the, the center lot line, the, the bisect the properties. But there, it does show on the site plans that we had previously submitted, the different driveway access points. And, you know, our consolidation of the two driveways off of Route one fourteen as part of the coordination with Mass DOT. So there's that one driveway access point that is all a hundred percent on the Bertucci's parcel. And then as you come around to the one twenty-five, Route one twenty-five side, the, it actually the bisects the, uh, that, the first drive you get to. So that's actually a shared, shared drive and then the, the rear drive that would be the primary entrance to get into Starbucks is a hundred percent on the on Mallon person.
But all of which would be considered shared access points. You have no controls over who's access, access from which castle, which entrance and exit.
It's, it would be all shared, correct?
And so the plan you're referring to is the plan that I requested late today. So that certainly hasn't made it to the board.
I think the original, I, I think the latest site plan, if I can be pulled up. The one that has been submitted previously, Steve.
I can share my screen and show you the plan. I mean, it's been on the plan, but it has been screened back and there's, there's a lot of information there. So I just drew a red line on it to, to help people identify where that is. So just let me get the right screen up here.
So the last plan in the packet, so this plan was submitted today. Just showed the zoning table as a combined lot. These are dated to September twenty, December twenty-first.
Correct. There's been no changes to the plan. We just added that zoning table today. So this, this line, and if I, if I move it off, you can see the line's been there, but it's just kind of light in the background. So just so people can see it, I'll throw the red line on there. So you can see where the existing Bertucci's building is to remain is on this lot entirely. And it does bisect here. So this would be a shared driveway as well as there's common rights to all driveways. And then it just diagonally bisects the two properties. So this is the lot for four nineteen and then this is four thirty-five Andover Street.
That's obviously the condition today where there's overlapping parking and, and, and shared parking. Which is the condition between the two, two parcels today.
And, and problems for a long time.
With that Where's the Starbucks? Can you just point out where the Starbucks is?
This is the Starbucks restaurant right here.
And where does, and where does the, and can you just show where, again, where the queue goes when they come around?
They would come in this entrance, come around the building and get in the queue right here.
Okay, and how do they exit?
They can go out, they come out here into the site drive and then they go straight out to Salem Turnpike where they could turn and get out to Andover Street.
So the concern I have is I, I know I've been thinking of this all as one parcel and that one of the things and my, my concern is stated many, many times was the queuing in the lines is that there was room going through both part, both current laws. If things got backed up or if we had issues, we had room to move. And I just worry that if, if they're not under common ownership, sort of like what John says, if, if Bertucci's decides, you know, hey, this isn't working for us, we're going to close things down or, or we get really busy. Now we need all our parking and we don't have room and these two become in conflict. That could be problematic, even if there are agreements in place. Obviously, that could lead to litigation and things like that. But again, I don't think that's likely, but there are more possible problems when you're not in combined ownership. And those are the problems that give me worry that, that kind of the things that we had talked about all along, you had kind of resolved in my mind. Just, just initial thoughts. Why don't we see, is any members of the other board, board members want to weigh in? Is this initially, was it not an issue?
The number, I think, you guys. I'm merely calling my office number. So that, that takes a little bit of time to get. I just sent it to my email.
Greg Lang, can you mute your?
Oh, it seemed like you're monitoring emails. We'll, we'll just email you.
Can someone mute Mr. Lane?
I just muted him.
And this is Aaron. Um, I, I, I would like to comment here. What I see, I'm looking at the plan. I went back to the January fifth packet and there's, there's work. It's not a lot of work, but there is some site work on that parcel that is owned by Thompson's Restaurant. So if this is going to be, remain two separate properties, are we going to be seeing some kind of application from them? Because it's technically on their property that some of this work is occurring.
I guess Attorney Johnson, that was my question. I guess Attorney Johnson's representing that they've signed off on this.
Yeah, we have, we've made it to the board with, with the application or authorization to file us by behalf. And again, when we come in with a site plan special permit, they were hoping to file this week. Again, we'll have their consent to file. And we understand the board's concern and we have, we have the same concern. So we're going to have agreements in place to make sure it's done. You have a condition already that they have to sign off on the drainage maintenance plan because both owners have to. And that's a precondition, I think, to a building permit. So, you know, we don't want to be in a position either having bought one lot and then having issues. Because clearly we're making a large investment in the site. So we, we have an interest as well to make sure it works.
What would be the terms of the O and M plan? Who, who takes over responsibility for the long-term maintenance plan?
I think it's set up to be signed by, by both property owners.
So that, that would be, that would be subject to our reciprocal easement agreement between the two projects. In all likelihood, it would be our responsibility to maintain our lot, their responsibility to maintain theirs.
And what happens if they're not maintaining theirs?
And again, this goes into any kind of lease negotiation or long-term reciprocal easement agreement. There are self-help rights between the parties that if one party doesn't do it, you have the ability to go on their behalf and make those, make those necessary improvements that are adversely impacting your property. Again, these two properties are extremely, you know, non-conforming parcels, in particular, the Bertucci's piece. We have gone with the Ethan Allen piece. We have now alleviated all of the non-conformities on that piece other than, you know, what is what we're requiring for the reduction in the, in the parking. And again, we were unfortunately unable to come to economic terms with the Bertucci's piece. That being said, they are willing to cooperate and sign off on all of the site changes that Crosspoint will be, will be responsible for. The bond that you guys have in place from us as part of the special permit decision, the draft decision will be able to cover if, if that is not the, you know, if for some unforeseen reason we are not able to. So we don't think that there is much deviation from what our kind of initial proposal was going to be with keeping the lot separate versus combining them.
Peter, hold on, John, let's get everyone and then we'll come back to you if that's okay. Peter, any comments?
No, not at this point.
Okay, Kate?
Nothing new to add.
Okay, Kelly?
Nothing new to add.
Let me ask the members of the board. Does anyone, I know we haven't closed the hearing yet, but does the, the draft decision as this week, does anyone have issues with that? I mean, I, I assumed that was going to be approved.
Hey, Connor, you know, I do have an rebuttal comment once, once you're ready.
Okay. All right. So that was my sense. Okay, John, go ahead. Additional.
A, a couple of questions, points of clarification. Is the presumption of the logic of a common driveway that there is a one common driveway?
The shared driveway, right?
Well, my point is there's, there's, I think there's three separate access points to the property. But two of them, the one on Turnpike Street and the one that's closest to the intersection on Andover Street. Clearly, you know, toggled between the two lots of that. So I guess my point ends up being is it's not just one common driveway, it's two, which makes it messier. To use that standard formula of common driveway because it's not a driveway, it's, it's, it's an entry point. But my, my bigger question that gets at what we've talked about already is the cross easement agreements that you're going to have. Again, are they going to basically give both sets of parties complete full access for cars to pass back and forth anywhere on the property? Or are there going to be limitations in, in that ability?
So that still remains to be fully hashed out. We're in the process of doing that. But I think that that is generally, you know, the parking would be shared between the two sites. There would be kind of restrictions that we would have as far as overburdening parking. And then, you know, as far as access to the three, to the, I think we would, we would definitely have access to the two northernmost points of access, which are the ones, the point of the property along Bertucci's. And then the third one would be, you know, up for discussion at this point in time. But again, we're, we're still working through that negotiation.
And I get, you know, some of it's open for discussion and that, but if for the third one, which I presume is the one on Turnpike Street, if you can on the Turnpike Street and get over to the the, the other lot with the Starbucks, that's a really big problem. I mean, compared to everything we've talked about related to traffic and circulation and flow. And if that's not certain that's going to happen, don't we have to sort that out before we finalize this?
And for all intents and purposes, you know, I don't think it's anybody's intent to restrict access to that.
Yeah, I don't, I, yeah, I don't, I think it would work better for everyone to have full circulation of the site. I, and Jonathan's a little bit closer to, to it than I am in that regard. But I think, you know, restricting access in and out obviously complicates things. And I don't know, I don't think that would be
You know, there's any practicality to us being able to restrict any access to that.
I mean, the concern that I have a little bit is, I mean, I, I have a little bit of a, you know, a small learning point until it's really not a common driveway. until it's really not a common driveway, but my bigger real concern is that we have really solid agreements on these cross easements that are going to create problems that that I brought up and then Eton brought up in. Like, I I don't particularly like approving something, then finding out we can't get the easements and then sort of, does does that mean we don't have a project or not? I mean, how long is it going to take you to get these easements?
I would I would hope that we would have them within the next thirty days.
Okay, so let me, let's take the, let's take the butter comment, Jean.
Okay, so the comment is from Seth Bedard. At seven thirteen tonight, my name is Seth Bedard and I live at fourteen Highland Terrace. My family and I have great concerns regarding the proposed building at four nineteen slash four thirty five Andover Street. As is, it is extremely dangerous and at times impossible to exit Highland Terrace onto Route one twenty five. We would like to see a clear marker in the street which would allow traffic to allow cars exiting Highland Terrace easier and safely access to Route one twenty five. I will gladly elaborate if the board would allow. Thank you for your time, Seth Bedard, fourteen Highland Terrace.
Is that in the street, he said? The sign in the street, is that the request?
We would like to see a clear marker in this which would allow traffic to allow cars exiting Highland Terrace easier and safe and safety access through Route one twenty five.
Okay, I pointed certainly makes sense, you know, that the actual parkers in the street are actually outside of our jurisdiction, but when we do the traffic study, we can after the fact, we could look at that and potentially talk to Mast dot probably would have to be the people to talk to on that would be my guess. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bedard. Here's my thought. We can vote on it as is with the common ownership requirement. And then later on, if there's another, if a modification wants to come forward or modification and a common driveway, we can do that, or we can wait until you have everything ready, common driveway, easement agreements, operating O and M agreement, you have everything, bring it back. And then vote on it then. I I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote to condition anything because I think it's too up in the air. That's my opinion. If other members of the board want to vote, we can vote, but that's what I would. That would be my opinion. So why don't we go down? What do what do people want? And then I'll ask the after again what they want to do. John?
Yeah, this is this is Aaron. I I I I would feel comfortable if we closed the public hearing tonight and voted on this. I would vote on the on the draft decision, I would vote to approve that.
Would you vote to approve the amended language regarding what would happen if this was not joined and conditioning building permits on certain agreements being put in place later on?
No, just on the, as we've been presented over the past few sessions, the that this is all one lot. If that doesn't turn out to be, then they could always come back for a modification.
Okay, John?
Yes, agree with that.
Okay, Peter?
Um, Eton, I hope I haven't missed it, but I was hoping we could also talk about, and I know we did last time, but talk about the monitor.
Yeah, yeah, we can talk about, let's let's finish this point and then we'll talk about the monitor as well.
So I agree with the last two comments.
Okay, and I'll come back to the monitor before we go to the applicant. Kate?
That's not me. I I
Me neither, but I still.
I agree with everything everyone said and vote the decision as it's already been drafted and let them come back.
Okay, I, okay, and Peter, what do you want to, let's go back to the monitor?
Yeah, I I I know we talked about this last time, but I do have some questions about it. So my first question is, does this set a precedent for all other projects that if they don't want an independent monitor, they can have their own engineer because I really don't want us to be in position. I can be persuaded that there are some projects that it makes sense to do this, but I feel quite strongly that there are other projects that it tends to do this.
Okay, let's go. Where is the where is the monitor condition?
It's, well, Gene included in the packet in edited version of the monitored monitor agreement.
But I, but I'm just, I just, I want to, Gene, can someone or someone, if anyone can point in the draft, what? Forty-four. So maybe we can add something to forty-four saying why in particular as to this project we're agreeing to this company?
So so my bias would be, it's probably, I would advocate more often the norm to have the project engineer oversee a monitoring program. And in the exception, to have an independent monitor for various reasons.
So what would an example, Gene, this is Peter, be of a project that you know, not have entertained the engineer being the monitor?
So I would say the Amazon project. The scale of that and having another set of eyes on that, I the Princeton properties, given the topography of that and the two separate owners there and the the whole easement rights was one of those doing the site work for both sites as opposed to individual ownership, taking care of their own site.
So, you know, I would agree with that, Gene, and I could see though that logic applying to future projects where.
If I could just add to that, the proximity to wetlands, so both of those were extremely proximate to wetlands and overseen by the Conservation Commission as well, and this one is not.
Right, so I I could see that line of logic applying to other future projects. So I appreciate you giving the examples, looking back. Eton, I I don't know what words in the decision would make it clear that this is not a precedent for all projects. I would perhaps leave it to others to come up with that wording, but if we don't have wording that serves that purpose, then I don't think I can support this. And I think we need to be very careful of that wording such that it cannot be used by any applicant to make the case that, well, you know, we should not have an independent monitor the way I read this.
I mean, Peter, I think two points. One, Gene, looking down the road, maybe the long term way to solve this is to put it in a plan and rules and regulations so that it's explicit criteria. You know, for now, I think putting in a few sentences similar to what Gene said about size, scale, slope, topography, adjacency to wetlands, to the watershed, steep slopes, you know, things like that. Basically, none of those things exist here. So there is likely not to be a huge amount of complexity that requires somebody independent to look at it.
Okay, I could go for that. I I like that, John and Gene, thank you. And then I have some comments on the actual edits in the monitor agreement. If we could take a moment to look at that, is that okay, Tom?
Yeah, so we'll be looking at for anyone following revised independent monitor form dot PDF. Okay.
And this is Aaron. I would just like to add to maybe further the conversation on the point of the the independent monitor. If this you know, any project that is is as as a as a right, you know, typically you just have the 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 engineers of record submitting controlled construction affidavits to the building commissioner. So, you know, in this instance, you know, we have site plan review. In other instances, there's watershed special permits. So I think, you know, anything that tries to define what that cutoff is, yeah, I think, you know, Gene's already mentioned a number of things as such wetlands and 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 topography, size of project. Yeah, it's just, you know, I think it's just another point I wanted to make to try to delineate that.
Okay, thank you. All right, Peter, what, any specific comments you want to bring out on the form?
Yeah, two. In the third paragraph, the word immediately has been deleted. I I don't disagree with that because I don't know what immediately means, but I do have a concern that there's no timeframe. You know, agrees to report when. I think there has to be a timeframe, otherwise, you know, you know, after the project is completed.
Isn't the timeframe as soon as observed or otherwise become known?
Well, that's my second comment. I know this has not been subject to editing this phrase, as soon as observed or otherwise become known. And, you know, I I actually have a problem with that phrase, you know, as long as as long as the monitor doesn't see it or know of it, then there's no obligation to do due diligence. I I I I I mean, does anybody else see that?
Yeah, I I see what you're saying, but let's say we put it in, the monitor agrees to report to the planning board any violations within forty-eight hours. If they don't know about the violations, they can't report them.
Correct, but this is in effect saying that you don't really need to know about them because as long as you don't observe or be known, then then you're okay. And I I really that that's the wording and so why couldn't it be in forty-eight hours, any violations of the terms of the decision above, period?
Because you don't, I I guess because you don't always know, if I were the monitor, I'd say, well, I didn't know about it and how I you know, are we requiring them to be onsite every twenty-four hours? Like if a water pipe, if something breaks on a Thursday and they don't find out about it until next Tuesday?
Okay, so maybe the forty-eight hours has to change, but the whole point of being a monitor, whether it's independent or the engineer is to do your due diligence.
Yeah.
I'm saying it should require, you are required to report violations, period. Not just if you observe or become aware, the whole point of this is you are supposed to be aware. So I I can have more flexibility on the timeframe, but I think it ought to be the due diligence here. The requirement is you are required to report violations, period.
So the timeframe is not really the issue. The issue is being on top of things and not burying your head in the sand.
Correct, correct. That's the senior issue.
So then maybe it's it's language to the effect of you know, due diligence is required and, you know, non-observation or not knowing about it will not be, you know, not be deemed is in itself deemed a violation, you know?
Can't we just end the sentence, any violations of the terms of the decision listed above, just end?
Correct, that would be, I think that would satisfy.
Okay, I mean, and then common sense says, you know, you you need to be, if you didn't find out about it for two days and that there's a good reason for that, then fine. But if it's been two weeks because you weren't on vacation and nobody checked up on it, then it's a problem.
Well, it is part of an engineer's duty when they sign the controlled construction affidavit that that does denote that they've witnessed the the work progressing in that they've deemed it to be in accordance with the plans and and other aspects rulings that are part of the project. So 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 there is that, it's not like, I I I don't think there's going to be an instance where the engineer just says, go to it, guys, and let me know when you want me to sign the affidavit. But 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 I think there should be, i- i- if if the developer's engineer is going to be monitoring the construction, I I I feel that a field report issued at a designated frequency is applicable.
Okay, hold on, can we hold that thought for a second? So if it were to read, the monitor agrees to report to the North Andover Planning Board via the town planner, any violations of the terms of the decision listed above. Period. That's problematic because there's no timeframe for reporting it. So what if you reported it two months later at the end of the project?
Yeah, it is still a concern. Could we say we end the sentence in a timely manner or is that too ambiguous?
No, I think something like that, I think that 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 something like that is appropriate because then it allows for flexibility, both with the monitor as well as with the town and saying, you know, if this is a if it's a big deal, you should have been here immediately. If it's not that big a deal and it's something you didn't it's understandable why you didn't get there for twenty-four hours or forty-eight hours.
Sure, so it would be, it would be monitor agrees to report North Andover Planning Board via the town planner. Any violation of the terms of the decision list listed above in a timely manner, period?
Yes, I'm okay.
In addition to regularly scheduled monitoring reports.
Yeah.
Okay, that was my only, so my comments here, just to summarize, is we're going to put language in the condition along the lines of what Gene and John outlined. And then address it for the longer term in the regulations, that's two. And three is, we're going to edit this third paragraph as we just discussed.
I'm good with that. Anybody else? Everybody else? No opposition seems seems, let's do that.
Okay, thank you, and thanks for the time to go over this.
Okay, so I will put it to the applicant. Would you prefer us to vote on the project as, or the draft decision as is, knowing that the board will likely approve it with the lots being combined? Or would you prefer to wait, get all the other agreements in place and then present that with a common driveway application and have us vote on everything at that time?
I think what what I'd like to do is continue it to your next meeting, but but maybe we can just have an understanding as to what you're looking for as we go forward with two separate lots.
So, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, in that way, we have some understanding as to what you what you feel we need to address.
Okay, so I think it's a clear and precise plan showing the two lots, showing what 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 is being proposed at this very moment, the latest up to date. All of the the common driveway application, what's going to be in there, all of the agreements that are going to be put in place between the two lots to assure that access and maintenance and things of that like. Really, we want to be comfort comfortable knowing that if it's two lots, that all of the concerns we have regarding traffic and parking and things like that. Are there agreements in place that can be enforced as to all of those?
I I think what you what you've hit was the maintenance agreement access and then
Easement agreement, yeah.
Yeah, you know, anything other than really those three that come to mind. I'm not trying to hold you to it, but just as we, as we go forward.
I mean, really, any agreements that the two, the the two parties are gonna have, that the two laws are gonna have regarding the parcel? If there's something in particular that you don't think you'd have or don't have agreements on at the time, you can let us know, but that's, I think those are the main ones. Gene, John, anything else?
No, I'm I'm just going to circulate the revised zoning table to the building commissioner to confirm compliance with zoning as well.
Okay.
Nope, fine by me.
Okay, I think that's it, Mark.
Okay, so good to see you again in two weeks.
Yes, a second. No, 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 I think you're right. I think you're right. Yeah, February second. I mean, I say we've, I know for me, I I needed some convincing to get to where we were today in terms of approving the project, so. I needed some convincing to get to where we were today in terms of approving the project, so this was just a little bit of a curveball, so. Keep working.
No, I understand.
Okay, continue until February second.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Peter, thank you for your comments, those were very helpful. Okay, discussion items. May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one annual town meeting calendar.
All right, do you want to do the town meeting items prior to printing financial or?
Uh, yeah, I think so, yeah.
All right, so in your packet, I've laid out the town meeting calendar because it is right around the corner. As you know, for the past few years, we've lined up the calendar so that the planning board could entertain three public hearings on zoning amendment warrant articles. At the third of those public meetings, typically a recommendation is made. That recommendation is made ahead of the Board of Selectmen making a recommendation as well as the Finance Commission, and it's made at such a time that would allow for printing of that recommendation in the warrant in addition to the planning board report. So that being said, as I laid out this calendar, the legal notice to the Tribune for the public hearing itself would have to be submitted on February fourth for the first print date of February eighth, and you only have one meeting prior to February fourth. So that being said, I had, over the course of the year, actually had three, well, I'm sorry, I had two housekeeping type ideas in my head, as well as, as you know, the last meeting, there was interest in a rezoning effort for the business four zoning district, and so I've given you draft decisions for the three of those. If you'd like to entertain them or just have a high-level discussion tonight, maybe dig deeper on the February seventh second meeting. But either way, I'd have to have a pretty good feel for the legal ad and the materials would have to be available for viewing by the public the eighth print date.
Okay, so let's do high level today on the three that we have, and then any ones that kind of get the go-ahead. I don't think there, we'll try to really dig into and see if we can get in good shape for the next meeting.
Okay, so on the business four zoning district at the last meeting, it seemed the consensus of the board was to entertain adding personal service establishment to the business for allowed uses. There was a little discussion as to whether that may need a special permit or as a right, but yet could trigger site plan review, which would still bring it before you. And so I I included two items in your packet, the entire packet from the last meeting, but the two new items are a memo of uses and site plan review. And so in review of what exists today for B four, it does allow for personal services establishments, but only as an accessory use to a primary use, so not to exceed ten percent. The question came up is what's defined as a personal service, and it's a very limited definition. They refer to in the bylaw, a shoe repair, barbering, and dry cleaning, etc. I will say that in my experience in the last ten years, building commissioners have interpreted personal establishments very broadly, and so any type of nail, hair, massage, acupuncture, waxing, dog grooming is all under that personal service establishment. So it's much broader than the specific uses listed in the bylaw. And the consideration for a special permit, I will just say that typically when it's a use special permit, in almost all cases, that special permit is by the ZBA. So they're typically the granting authority. And then, like I said, often it could trigger a site plan review, which I included in this memo, I'm sure everybody's comfortable with what triggers site plan review. It would fall as in number three. Typically, it would affect traffic circulation and somewhat a runoff in this case. And then the only other items I called out in this definition is currently allowed uses are business office or professional office, and as we went through the parcels at the last meeting, I pointed out that in a similar residential building that faces Mermaid College, Remax operates in a residential building, there's a pediatrician that operates in a residential building on the other side of Peter Street. I think it's a palm reader that's operated in a residential building for quite some time. So those are all typical uses that are allowed now, I understand that the the homeowner has an experienced interest in those type of business at this location. But the other two that are already existing, I just called out, that seem to fit in a residential type-looking structure would be an art gallery or printing and reproduction. So at Town Hall, we utilize a printer on Second Street today that operates out of her home as well. And so I'm just only pointing out that there are some other uses beyond personal service establishments that may already be included in the bylaw. Just haven't seen interest in those at this particular location.
So if if a lot of these are going to require site plan review anyway, based on different triggers, why wouldn't it make sense just to make this site plan review anyway?
Well, you can't, until we see a site plan, the determination of whether the use triggers five or more parking spaces, whether it would be considered a circulation issue, it's kind of a case-by-case issue as, you know, applicants come before us.
No, and so I know that generally, but like, couldn't we make, if you're doing a personal service establishment in before, that you're required to go through site plan review regardless of the, if it trips anything?
So I haven't seen any example like that in the bylaw where it would say, you know, this use is allowed. Sometimes it says by special permit, but I've never seen it saying by site plan review, and John.
Did we, did we do that in the in the solar bylaw, or was it just special? I thought we did that in the solar bylaw.
The solar bylaw, we break out as as a right, site plan review, meaning not by special permit, and then site plan review by special permit, yeah, there's a whole depending on the use.
Oh, okay, all right, all right, all right, but I, that's, I'm thinking more along those lines, like, set it out as site plan review by special permit.
I would say that's a little different.
Okay. Okay. So do, so what do you need from us, Gene, whether or not we are kind of in favor or not in favor of this as is?
Yep, so the only other item is I included a draft bylaw that simply adds personal service establishments, and so the bylaws boarded, as we traditionally do, that strike through for anything being deleted and underlined for everything, anything being added. And other than just re-paginating the letters, adding personal service establishment is the only change.
So if we're looking, why don't we look through the warrant article just quickly? So this is draft B, draft B for warrant article dot DOCX dot PDF.
Yep. And I'll just remind you, at the last meeting, we went through all seventeen B four parcels. The only one that I thought was setback quite a bit from one fourteen and more industrial-type office uses is is way out on one fourteen towards Shopness Pond Road, that's the only one I kind of, like, is it appropriate to have a nail salon in there or a hair salon? That's the only one that kind of sticks out to me is, would anybody come forward with that, and if they did, would it be an appropriate location?
Well, so what is, hotel or motel seems a little aggressive.
Those are existing today. Again, they're existing because the B four zoning district calls for an eighty thousand square foot lot. These are all just so pre-existing, non-conforming that obviously a hotel wouldn't fit in these lots that surround one fourteen, one twenty-five Elm Street and one thirty-three, one fourteen.
Gene?
Yeah.
This is Wendy McGuire. So we, we actually, since the last meeting, we had another buyer come forward with some interest, I gave you just a teeny bit of information, but they were looking at putting a retail establishment, now I don't know if they would be able to put a building there or not, and that's something to be seen. Knowing that they have to go through a lot of other steps in the process, but they, what they were looking for was some type of retail establishment, and then I went back and I checked on the other buyer who was looking to buy all three lots originally. And if they come back and are able to, they would look for general business zoning for retail as well, or something that allows a retail establishment. So that's just something that was added since, or that came about since our last meeting.
So I will add that retail is allowed today also as an accessory use. So accessory retail or personal service in eating and drinking use shall be permitted in not to exceed ten percent of the total gross floor area of the principal use.
So I don't want to necessarily change the zoning and then have it come back, that it's not helpful.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I I just, I wanted to speak up and say, the two that are interested, I mean, ultimately, I think what the commercial brokers are looking to do is to buy all three parcels and put something there and deal with the wetlands, and if they do that, it's definitely would need, what the commercial broker told me was, it would need to be general business zoning. Now, I don't know if that's going to come to fruition, but that's, that's one, and then the one that I spoke to a couple of days ago, actually Saturday, was looking for retail as well, so that would be general business.
So so general business just has a lot broader uses.
Yeah, so I don't think we're going to do that, at least not on this. Independent, Gene, independent of the kind of the project that was, or the parcel that was the spur of getting this before us, do you think this is generally a good idea to just make this amendment for B four, adding these personal services? It seems to me to make sense in the area.
I think it's the least risky, I would say. And I I think there's examples, like I said, I mean, there's examples, I'm not sure why there's not, no one entertaining a real estate office, maybe Wendy, you can speak to that, but I mean, it seems that other locations started with a residential building that have been converted to uses like a real estate office or a pediatrician doctor, type office, lawyer office, things like that. So I think, I think there's enough flexibility in adding personal services, I don't think there's a real downside to it because you have the protection that it could trigger site plan review.
That's, that's my thought too, so, okay. Any members of the board have any additional comments? No, hearing none, seeing none, okay, so why don't we just, why don't we go forward with this as is? I I mean, yeah, general business is not going to happen district-wide, and if everyone to come back on that individual parcel, we could talk about it then, but that seems like a whole nother conversation. So let's move forward with this as is with your draft, Gene.
Okay, so I'll just carry it to the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay, so the next warrant article is, again, what I consider a housekeeping article for CDD two zoning district. You may recall, two years ago, it was two thousand and nineteen, the board reported an article to reduce the frontage and the lot area requirement within CBB two. And the bylaw narrative for those, so Article sixteen lists all the dimensional requirements, and that's where we made the adjustment. However, it was some oversight in that we didn't also update the Table Two dimensional requirements, and so this article simply proposes to update that table. But I will add that Eric Loth from Minko reached out to me over the weekend, and he would like the board to entertain a few-minute discussion as to potentially expanding this beyond a housekeeping type article to account for restaurant drive-through use, which was contemplated back at the same time that this warrant article was put in in two thousand and nineteen. However, Alex would just like to talk about market conditions and the site that he owns in particular.
Okay.
Thank you, Aton and Gene, and thanks for, I, I know you guys are busy and there's a lot going on, and this is very short timing, so I really appreciate your time, and I'll try to keep it brief. Yes, we had, we really appreciate the changes that were made, and I think they make a lot of sense, not just for our parcel, but for the other parcels in CDD, and hopefully it's all going to work towards allowing things to be redeveloped along there. Lots changed in the last year, obviously, and it made me think it would be hopefully worthwhile just opening the conversation again. Obviously, we haven't redeveloped the site yet, we haven't found the right user for the site. At the time, we were hoping we would have a bank user there, we don't have one yet. Don't need to tell you anything, you don't already know that the pandemic has accelerated some trends that are already going on with banks. In some cases, even though they've built some here recently, a lot of banks nationwide are closing branches. They're seeing market increase in mobile banking and a drop in people using the actual bank branches themselves, that's a trend that's been going on for some time, that greatly accelerated during the pandemic because obviously people are avoiding in-person contact wherever they can to stay safe. The same thing's happened with restaurant uses. Obviously, the more restaurant uses that can are going to more drive-through facilities, there's a new trend coming along with pickup lanes, you have some of the larger players like Chipotle and Shake Shack putting in lanes simply for pickup, not ordering and pickup, but actually just for pickup, and it made me think, geez, if that new place, Pita Time, had something like that, or before that, you know, the Howling Wolf Taqueria, boy, they'd probably do great with it right now, right, because all of their business right now is takeout, and if someone could drive up and grab that food rather than getting out, it's safer from a pandemic perspective. Suppose it's more handicap accessible as well, and once we get used to any sort of convenience, I think from what I'm reading in CoStar and other publications around the, around the business and commercial real estate web, once we get a convenience like that, generally, we don't go back, right, or at least not back to where we began, just like we're, a lot of people are getting things delivered, they're going to continue to get things delivered, so. Looking at the research, looking at what we've seen in the market, looking where we've been over the last couple of years, looking for a user for the property, it struck me that I'd like to come back in front of you and say, hey, I I think the commercial development district overall would be well-served by removing the restriction on drive-throughs. Right now in CDD two, it's it's for properties with five acres, and that can have a four-hundred-foot setback from the residential district. What I think would make sense, what I would ask, and what I think might make sense, is if that simply were a special permit requirement and/or a site plan review requirement, because I understand that with any development, there'll be concerns that need to be addressed in terms of where does the car, where do the cars come in, do they have enough room to queue before they, you know, get to the drive-through or pickup lane or what have you? Certainly, there's always concerns that need to get addressed, a lot is already in the zone in terms of buffers, additional buffers to residential areas, etc. But potentially that exists, that additional step would simply allow more flexibility in the CDD district to enable more of these underutilized properties that frankly aren't in great shape, not just ours, but up and down the road, to be redeveloped in a way that, you know, make, make the town look good, make, make the streetscape look good and provide something useful for our residents, including our Marmot College residents, and they're always growing. And the other thing that kind of made me bring this to the forefront now as well is the work that MassDOT is planning on doing to this streetscape, you know, have this road redone with a beautiful walking path along it, and the whole, the whole streetscape really be now a smart street use, how great would it be if that corridor in our town at the same time could continue to be redeveloped with new sort of revitalized uses for the town at, kind of at the same time? So I can send you articles about, you know, what the commercial real estate market is doing and talk about the the banks and the restaurants, etc., and the research that I've found, but the short story is, we think we'd have a better chance of redeveloping our parcel into something that is an amenity to the town and an amenity to the town's tax base. And I do think that the rest of the district as well would do better with this increased flexibility, but not necessarily reserving it as a byright use, but allowing to still go through, as the zoning already says, go through the zoning board and/or the planning board. So I I know I'm blindsiding you a little bit with this tonight, and I really appreciate your, your time, but I would love it if you would take the time to think about that, if it's, if it's possible in your, in your agenda and in the short time we have now between now and town meeting. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. We'll just take, I'll just take feedback. For me, I really have no interest in allowing drive-throughs in this district. The next thing on our agenda is Royal Crest. Already talking about significant traffic increases, we just talked about traffic with the Andover Street project. Additional drive-throughs on one forty, I agree that they are in demand, which is just going to lead to more traffic, and I not really sure, I'm sold on that, that's the answer we need for one fourteen. So it's not something that I'm particularly looking to push at this point, but whatever, if if other members of the board feel otherwise, we can look at it, but I I'm not particularly interested at the moment in this. Let's go down the line, Aaron. Uh, let's go down the line. Aaron.
I have nothing further.
John?
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Aton. I'm not keen on doing this now and I'm not sure in the end it's a net plus. I mean, certainly we can look at it, but no way for this year or town meeting.
Peter?
I agree with you and John, Aton.
And Kate?
I think we need some more information. I don't know off the top of my head how I feel about it.
Okay. And, and Alex, I'd like to see how some of these trends do do play out. I'm really curious to see what happens. Let's, oh God, let's hope come the fall that maybe we're a significantly vaccinated population and we're moving on towards the end of the pandemic. What are going to be the trends for banking and restaurants and things like that? What are the trends going to be like for traffic? Are we going to see traffic when school is back in session in Merrimack? And people are going back to work? Are they working from home or are they going back into the commuting? And let's see where things turn out. And I think maybe next fall, early winter, maybe you have a better pitch if the traffic stays down and if things are back to normal. But at this point, I'm not sure it's something that we'd be looking to push.
Okay. I appreciate everyone taking a look at it and thinking about it. The last point I'll leave you with is the, the, another reason I think it could work on one, obviously it's 114, it's a busy corridor, is uh, your, your objectives for the CDD say that you're looking for uses typically associated with transportation corridors and large traffic flows. So that, that's kind of where we, where I came back. So again, thank you for your time.
All right. Thanks, Alex. Okay. And Jean, do we have one more?
Yes, we do. So um, the watershed protection by law. This just struck me as, first of all, the bylaws are really hard read to begin with, but it seems to me that when 1994, when we added the conservation zone, we didn't necessarily update a lot of the narrative to, to specify the differences and distances for the four different zones that apply. And all this does, again, I'd consider it more housekeeping. It just clarifies the distances depending on the year the lot was created. So it specifies what's shown in table one and table two in a narrative format. But in addition to that, what I came across recently this year was the prohibited uses that are specified, the general zone specifies as so many prohibited uses. And then the, the next buffer zone closest to the general zone is the non-discharge zone. And that zone did not prohibit what's prohibited in the general zone. And so I, that I just think is a glaring error. And so this looks to fix that error and then carry that fix through the non-disturbance, the non-discharge and the conservation zones in terms of prohibited uses. And I consider it housekeeping. Corrections when they should be specifying non-disturbance zone and it says conservation zone. So you'll see again in the draft strike throughs and underline text to make corrections and then clarify. And again, I would just ask you to read that through for the next meeting. We don't have to get into the weeds of this. Like I said, it's not an easy read, but for the most part, fixing errors that I think should be fixed in the short term. And then I would expect that once the watershed update plan is completed, hopefully by the summer of this year, that we would probably have another Warren article next year, more substantive than this.
Will that come with a signed by law rewrite?
Maybe.
Okay. Let's, uh, so yeah, that seems, that seems great. Let's do that for the next meeting. Just keep it on and let's see if we can go through. Yeah.
Yeah, I've taken a look at this as well. And just for the benefit of the board, I, I agree with Jean. This has always been a very difficult section to read and make sense of. And part of it is that there were mistakes between the sections. And the other part is that restrictions in one zone did not properly carry over into the subset zone the way they clearly should have. So I agree with Jean's conclusion that this is housekeeping and I'm also gonna ask Jean if it might be possible to include a, a sketch to give a visual representation of how these zones work. I've found that useful. It may or may not be useful to put into this bylaw, but I'm at least gonna talk to Jean about it and see whether or not it's practical.
Okay, great. Thank you, Peter. Appreciate your eyes on it. Okay. So let's continue that for February 2nd. Okay. And now we are on to Royal Crest Estates, 1 and 28 Royal Crest Drive. Trinity Financial, Jim Keefe proposed master redevelopment plan for the property. All right. Before we go to the applicant, we have received, this is, I want to talk to the board as well as the members of the public. We have received, starting really this week and maybe late last week, we've started to receive a lot of public comments about the project as it's become, as we've been talking about it and it's become more known through the community and we're receiving a lot of comments. And I know our agenda does say that everyone can some submit comments either before the meeting or during the meeting. Generally, that agenda item, that language is for our public hearings where we have to take comment. Right now, we're doing a discussion really for the board. We do want to take public comments. We want to hear from everybody. But we're not going to be able to address every comment, every meeting and read every comment and answer every question. We just don't have the time or the capacity and we also haven't gotten all the information yet. So I do want people to continue to submit comments. We, we will read them all. Like we got a bunch of comments today. Some were one page, some were half a page, some were four pages with a dozen points, some had more points. I, I know all of us on the board work full-time, regular jobs, so it's hard, especially day of to fully read, digest, and then be able to respond to comments. Same with the applicants and the engineers and our peer reviewers. So what I'd like to do is anyone who's submitted a comment, we have received it. Usually Jean responds, lets you know that we've received it. We will be addressing all of the comments. What we're going to try to do is today go through some items, finish up our traffic discussion, talk about public outreach and a program summary. And then I'd like to get a sense from the applicant of what the next meeting or two looks like in terms of what we're going to be talking about and what information we'll have. And then maybe we can kind of say, okay, if the next meeting, we're going to be talking about, again, I'll hear from you, but examples, financials or schools or stuff like that. I'd like to pick a meeting date where we are likely to respond and review public comments. And what I'm going to try to do for that meeting is take all the comments that we've gotten, try to organize them because some have repeated themes, some have repeated comments, some have individual questions. You know, we see comments about traffic. We see comments about financials, schools. Let's try to, I wanted, I'll, I'll take this on of trying to organize the comments that we've received so that we can discuss them as a board, discuss them with the applicant, answer questions, ask questions, and then get further input from the public. So that's going to be kind of the plan. For anyone interested, the way that this works is we have not set a date for when this will come before any particular body. As it's proposed right now, the proposal would require zoning changes. Those zoning changes would need to come before either town meeting or a special town meeting. It looks unlikely, given the timeline we discussed earlier, that a, that this would be ready for a, for the May town meeting. There has been some discussion of a potential September town meeting that would have to be set by the Board of Selectmen and and town manager. That hasn't happened yet. There are some discussions about that, but it hasn't happened yet. So we, before any warrant articles and town meeting, we will have actual public hearings. But we haven't gotten to those stages yet. So from my perspective, those are kind of the steps going forward. Any members of the board want to talk about anything regarding public comments? Before we jump in?
Yeah, Aton, I, I know you said this in your preliminary, but I just want to highlight that, I think what you said is we very much encourage public comments. And we're at a stage here where, where, we're not in a public hearing, but please continue to send the comments in and you are going to organize them and we will have an opportunity to discuss them and address them. So yes, no hesitation to send in the comments.
Yes, and that will be before any public hearings. That will be as part of the discussion. I just think with, with the amount that we're getting and then I anticipate getting, it's very difficult to go through a four-page letter with 20 points and then answer each one right now and then go to the next one, which may have some of the same and may have some different, and then get responses from those. I'd rather be thorough and conscientious about this, knowing that people are putting their time into asking these questions and they're good questions. And we need to be able to take the time to look at them and analyze them and get answers when appropriate.
Good. And the only other thing I'd add, and then I'll be done on this topic, but you know, many of these public comments that we've seen so far are concerning that they're not getting word via any notification. You're hearing this word of mouth from a neighbor or a friend and they do not understand why. And this includes direct butters to the property. They are not hearing. And there's great, and I would say, rising concern over that. And this is something that I would note, we, the board have discussed in prior meetings with the applicant.
Okay, great. So.
Aton, can I just add that?
Yes, please.
Although I, I support as many comments as we can get, they're really helpful for this process. I would just ask that any attention could be paid to having those comments submitted by noon on Thursday, the Thursday prior to any meeting date. That's when we post the agenda. That's when the board gets their packet. And it's very difficult to start sending one at a time comments between the agenda posting and meeting night. And there's no guarantee that on a Tuesday, I am available to, to process the amount of comments that came in today. And so I just be sensitive to the fact that just because you submit them on a Tuesday afternoon, doesn't mean it'll make it to the board packet. As Aton said, the intent of submitting during the meeting is for a public hearing process, not that they won't be taken during the public hearing, during the public meeting. But um, I just ask for your courtesy that if you can send it earlier in the process and have it in time for the agenda posting, we would appreciate it.
Right. Just on that, you know, I know, I was, I got a couple of messages today and I tried to respond to those and, you know, you know, my personal day job was crazy today. And so I've read the stuff beforehand that came in, but anything that came in today, I, I just didn't have time to read. So I want to be able to read everything and trying to do it while doing Zoom while, and everything else i- is difficult. So we, every comment will be looked at, we'll try to organize them and everyone will have a chance to be heard before this project is moved to move further. Okay. Okay. So why don't we talk tonight about traffic?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members and, and Jean. This is Mike Lozano from Trinity. I'm here with Jim Keefe. I'm also here with Matt Healy from VHB, who is our traffic engineer, along with Greg Lane from our team, who will be, you know, working to update you on our community outreach efforts and we'll talk about that. But I will turn it over to Matt, who will go through some of the comments that we heard, both from the board and from your peer reviewer related to the traffic study. And then we'll talk about the responses to, to the peer review and those comments and, and have a discussion about that and hopefully answer all of your questions. So Matt, take it away.
Sure. I think I'm going to just keep it high level, just give a quick summary of the process to date and then we can get into some details. Reviewer, if that's what the board wants to do. So just in summary, giving back an access study back in, on October 30th, 2020. I presented that study to you, you folks on November 5th. The town's peer review consultant, Van Assen Associate issued a comment letter on December 9th, 2020. And that contains some questions, clarifications they wanted on some of our analysis and inputs and assumptions, things like that. As part of that review, they requested some additional analysis to clear up some things. VHB submitted a formal response with the additional analysis on January 12th, 2021. And just yesterday, VAI issued their final response. In summary, we're in general agreement that the comments have been addressed. I think we're going to need to refine some specific language related to mitigation. And because we are on state highway, we're going to have to do some additional coordination with Mass DOT to, to refine those, those mitigation items. With that, I think, you know, I'd either hand it back over to the town or, or to Van Ass to get into a little bit more detail if we want to go through any specific topics on that.
Okay. Why don't we hear from Mr. Dirk?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Jeffrey Dirk with Van Assen Associates, the town's transportation consultant. So Matt provided a, a good overview of kind of what the work products have been since, since the last meeting that we've had. And as a part of our review comments, we basically asked the applicant to look at a few things. So it's basically, you know, to clarify how they develop the existing conditions as it relates to the project and specifically the amount of traffic that the site is currently generating and how they accounted for that and looking at the future conditions. The second thing we'd ask them to look at is some specific enhancements to the mass DOT improvements along the Route 114 corridor. As you might remember, even with the improvements that Mast Dot was doing, the additional traffic from the project combined with just background traffic, there were still some locations where we were, where the analysis was indicating that there were some capacity constraints. And specifically those locations were approximate to the project sites. So basically the intersections on either side at the Andover Bypass, also at the Andover Street, 125, 114 intersection, and then at the entrance to the project site, Walsh Way. So we'd asked for them to look at, you know, are there additional improvements that could be done to enhance the Mast Dot project that would address some of those capacity constraints at that location? And then finally, there was a series of comments mostly relating to the timing of the project in relation to the Mast DOT improvements. Because essentially the analyses that have been done were basically existing conditions, future conditions with the Mast DOT improvements, and then adding the project's traffic on top of those future conditions with the Mast DOT improvements. And so the, really the timing of the Mast DOT improvement project in relation to the build out of this project is, is absolutely critical. And so we'd asked the applicant to look at, at, look at that as well. So the, the clarification of existing conditions was relatively straightforward and we didn't expect that that was going to change anything with respect to the, the analyses. And it just really came down to some, some footnotes and tables and some backup information for how they remove that existing traffic from the roadway network. So that was, that was all addressed. So now looking at the capacity analysis that we'd asked them to do and specifically focusing in on the enhancements to some of the intersection improvements. And I think if you remember from my last presentation to the board, what I had mentioned was critical was looking at the vehicle queuing at the intersections. And we'd asked the applicant to not only revise the analysis, but provide some diagrams for both you to look at as well as ourselves as your consultant, to see what is the backup of traffic at these intersections? What does it look like and how might that backup interact with adjacent intersections? So you'll see as a part of the applicant's responses, a series of drawings, actually aerial photographs where they've superimposed the queues or the backups at each of the intersections on those drawings. So you can see the dynamic that happens between queuing blockages at intersections and how it might affect the operations of the the roadways as well as some of the adjacent side streets that intersect 114. So as we reviewed that analysis, there was a couple of things that really are apparent as you look at those drawings. And specifically, I think what you want to focus on as you look at those drawings is where the vehicle queues either block the ability to get into a turn lane. So the queues extend along 114 or on the side streets to the point where if I want to make a left-hand turn, I can't get in that left turn lane. Or same thing, if I want to get in the right turn lane, I can't get there because I'm stuck at the back of this queue. So where does that happen? And then where does the queue get so long that it backs up into adjacent intersections? So as you look at that queuing diagrams that took place, there were just some things that really you could see kind of jump out at you and they are, you know, at a few of the intersections, but Waverly Road, on the Andover Street intersection, at Walsh Way, and then along 114 between Walsh Way and the Andover Bypass. So if you look at those, basically those four locations, which you'll see is on Waverly Road. on the Andover Street, um, approach to 114, uh, you do see the, the vehicle queues on those approaches extend back far enough that they block the ability to get into turn lanes. Um, and so we've suggested to the applicant that, uh, potentially look at is the ability to be able to extend the two-lane approach or the, or the ability to stack more cars on those approaches might be something that they'd want to look at. In particular, at the Walsh Way intersection, one of the things that is noted when you look at the queuing diagrams is, I believe during the weekday evening peak hour, the queue from Walsh Way on 114 northbound, so heading towards 495, that queue, uh, potentially would extend back and past the Andover bypass intersection under current conditions.
Jeff.
Those things are concerns when you look at kind of the operations of the intersections, uh, how they might, they might interact with each other.
Jeff, can I ask you a pause for a minute? This is Peter. Uh, Aton, I'd like to ask, uh, on this particular point, if Jeff can refer us to the aerial that, uh, gives us the graphic depiction of the queuing that he's now speaking up. Extremely helpful, Jeff, but I think it would be easier for us to follow if, if you could tell us what page, got what aerial photo or rather aerial photo with the queuing, you know, we represent it, is that possible?
Yes, and, and do you have on your screen, do you have a copy of the response to comments?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I, I think I do, uh, 210112, response to peer review number one, final. That's the document you're referring to and it's looks like dozens of aerials.
If you think if you go to the aerial on page 26, I've been following, I think that's where we're at, in that document here.
I am, okay, I'm going to page 26.
At least that's where I, why I've been following along, whether right or wrong.
Okay, and Jeff, which of the four, or which of the two on 26 are we looking at, or is it 27?
So my pages aren't numbered in the document that I have.
No, our, our pages are not numbered either, we're just looking at the page numbers on the PDF.
Uh, the weekday morning is page, uh, 26 and the weekday evening is page.
I'm going to open my, I'm going to open my document. Sure, thank you, I, I'm sorry to delay us here.
No, no, that's okay.
Yeah.
All right, so my, my drawings are just loading right now, so let me. All right, so let's start with page, maybe if we just walk through them. So if we start at page 22, so page 22 shows the Waverly Road intersection. And so what you see in the drawing there, so that's the, those are the backups that are predicted to occur in terms of the queuing at that intersection. And what I was mentioning is if you look at the Waverly Road approach, and this is during the, um, morning peak hour. So you see on the, the Waverly Road, I guess it would be the, uh, northeast leg of that intersection. So you see how those black, the white and the black lines, they back up so, you know, to a point where you wouldn't be able to get into a left turn lane approaching 114. And now we'll go to.
Give a quick explanation of the white and the black, uh, 50th versus 95th percentile queues, just explain what that means.
Sure, so, so just approximately, what it means is during that peak traffic volume hour, about half the time, so the 50 percentile queue is the queue that you'd expect to occur roughly about 30 minutes during that 60-minute period. So over the course of an hour, you know, 30 minutes within that hourly period, you expect the queue would extend back to where you see the white line. So that's the, that's the average or the 50th percentile queue. So 50% of the time, it'll be shorter than that, and then 50% of the time, it might be longer than that. So that's the definition of the 50th percentile queue. The, the 95th percentile queue, which is the dark line, so that's, that's the queue that would be, um, only exceeded 5% of the time. So 95% of the time, it's going to be less than the black line. Um, and 5% of the time, it might be a little bit longer than that. So that's roughly about three minutes during the 60-minute period. You could have a queue that would get back that far and that's typically your maximum queue that you'd expect. So it's a, it's a finite period during the peak hour, when you would expect that you might have the, the black queue. So it, it's not necessarily correct to say that you want to design for the 95th percentile queue. It, it was probably more reasonable to suggest you design for something closer to the average queue. Uh, because most of the time, you're going to, if you at least have the average queue, vehicle is going to be able to get up to the, get into a turn lane. And there's only a small amount of time during that one-hour period when you might get back to that 95th percentile queue. But at least if you provide enough queue storage for the average queue, that black line you see on these figures won't be as long as what you see on there, because you've still, you've increased your queue storage capacity. I don't know if that was too technical, but the rough way to, is, is 30 minutes out of the 60-minute period, you might have the 50th percentile queue and only three minutes out of the 60-minute period, you'd have what's shown as the 95th percentile queue. So it's a very small window within that 60-minute period.
Very helpful, and tell us again, page 22 is what time of day, what day of the week?
So that's the weekday morning peak hour.
Okay, thank you.
So now, if you look at 23, this is at the Eaglewood Shops, um, you don't see, there's, there's not really much queuing happening at that intersection. The next intersection is at the Peter Street 114 intersection, and now I'm at page 24. And again, you, you do see the extended queuing happening there, but, but you still have the ability to get into the turn lane. So you still see the turn lanes have very small queues within them. So there wasn't a, you know, you see the long queues on 114, but you can still get in those turn pockets. Now, the next slide, which is 20, page 25, so this is the Andover Street 114 Elm Street intersection. And so this was the location I was mentioning, if you look at Andover Street, and this is adjacent to the project that you were reviewing earlier in the evening, what you see is that queue on the Route 125 approach, there's a heavy left turn demand on Andover Street. So that gets back far enough that if you look at that 95th percentile queue, it extends back to a point where you really don't have two travel lanes. So it would be difficult for, if that left turn lane extends back that far, anyone that wanted to come down to the intersection to head, let's say, through Elm Street, uh, because they didn't, or to make a right-hand turn if they came out of one of the driveways close to the intersection. Um, it, it starts to become difficult to basically get up to that stop line if you're through vehicle, because the left turn lane is backed up so far.
Jeff, this is Kelly Cormier, just a question on this, the intersection you mentioned, this is the intersection we were just talking about, an earlier project. Does this assume any of the changes for, um, the potential drive-through there? If there's any impacts or changes to this intersection, would, or is it appropriate to do that?
Um, so, so I think that this, the drive-through addition that's proposed there, I mean, I think they could include, but most of that traffic is going to be pass-by trips. So I think what it would do is introduce additional friction in terms of turning movements, going in and out of that property. But in terms of net increase or net new traffic, it's probably not going to be something that would exceed the growth rate that they've assumed in their study. So now if you go to the next slide, which is.
I have a question on 25.
Yes.
Correctly, that, um, first off, let, let me ask you again to clarify, the left hand is no build and the right hand is build.
Correct.
What is that? Tell me what that means.
So if you compare the left hand to the right-hand side, that, any, any changes you see are increasing in the queuing would mean that the addition of traffic from the project, from the redevelopment project, caused an impact. And so you, you'd see ex- longer vehicle queues.
So no build means without the project?
Without the redevelopment project, that's correct.
Okay, and it looks to me like this is pushing the backup further past the Peter Street intersection.
That's correct.
And that then gets into that cascading, um, issue that you talked about earlier, where, um, you were saying, um, how backups intersect, uh, interact with other intersections.
That's exactly right, right. So, so that's why looking at, looking at levels of service, I'd like the, what you see in the slides here, which are the, you see the D and the E in the center of the intersection, um, that's, that's your overall level of service. But that's, that's only giving you one picture of how that intersection is operating. This is this queuing of, uh, uh, in a lot of instances, especially with coordinated signal systems, is, is probably more important than your overall level of service. Because the coordinated system is supposed, is progressing traffic from one intersection to the next one. And it is dependent upon queues being able to clear. It's really, you don't want to introduce more traffic between intersections than you can physically store. And so what this has shown and is because of these backups, it just really speaks to, you know, the potential for needing to adjust the traffic signal timing or introduce a different type of signal system. And that's one of the things that we've asked the applicant to, you know, discuss with Mast DOT and consider as an enhancement to the project. And that's, that's introducing what's known as, uh, adaptive traffic signal control. And I, I can explain that kind of when we, you know, get to, um, some of the recommendations that we've had, had for enhancements.
Sure, so tell me if I'm reading this correctly, if this is a reasonable sort of observation. On page 25, the no build versus the build extending back from the Elm Street intersection back to Peters Street intersection. It's actually a very small difference in terms of number of yards. In fact, it's so small that it almost looks like it's de minimis. Like you look at the difference in the length and it's like, eh, doesn't make that much of a difference. But am I correct in observing that the, the, this, the, the, the important differential here is that it is pushing the 50% of the time, the Elm Street intersection will go back beyond the Peters Street traffic light, 50% of the time. So it's not a big difference in terms of number of feet, but the fact that it crosses that other intersection brings into play your concern about, you know, one intersection backing up and clogging another intersection. And to me, that's a bigger deal than just the number of feet difference between no build and build. Um, in other words, it's a, it, it really is getting to a capacity issue, not of just the road, but of sequential intersections.
That, that's correct, because what, what you pointed out exactly is that when I was explaining the 50th percentile queue and what the meaning of the 50th percentile queue and the meaning of the 95th percentile queue, really it's how frequent, how frequently can you expect these backups to occur during the peak hour? And you're exactly right, even though you may see that the white, the white line in this case, even though it might get incrementally longer, not by a large amount, what you're really seeing and what it's really telling you is that the, the amount of time that the Peter Street intersection would have a queue that would extend to or beyond it will become more frequently. It's not the, it's not how much longer is the, is that white line, but it, it's really telling you, do I expect that intersection to become blocked more frequently on a regular basis during the peak hour? And that's what it's saying to you, it's saying, yes, it will be blocked more frequently. Now, so that, that's, you know, that's a result of this, but really what we're doing is taking that result in the conclusion to arrive at, well, how do we deal with that? And what is an appropriate measure to address it so that that doesn't happen or it gets better? And, and that's why these, these diagrams are important and they're telling, because that's what we want to understand. Not so much the length of that queue, but what it means in terms of how often is an adjacent intersection going to be blocked? And will it be blocked more frequently, uh, than before? And then how do we address that?
And so now you've gone back to the applicants with that question of how are you going to address it? And am I correct that what you've asked is, you know, what can they do to, uh, impact the Mast DOT project, could there be changes in that? In other words, it's not up to the town to resolve that, correct?
Oh, a- absolutely not, and, and the other thing I, right, absolutely not. It's not up to the town to resolve it and, and it's really something to be addressed that will not entail additional cost or implications financially to the, to the town. And I think that's very important. The other thing that's important is that the things that we've suggested, uh, aren't necessarily things that, there are things that are not difficult to be, to, to be implemented. And to, and to the extent that Mast Dot's not already doing it, it's something that can be done. And it, it really deals with, you know, better traffic management, um, as well as looking more at the project and things the applicant can undertake to reduce the amount of traffic that would be associated with the project. So they're all things that are, they're independent of the town, it doesn't require the town to do anything. There are things that are under the control of the applicant and/or, uh, are things that could be done in consultation with Mast DOT and don't necessarily involve, you know, wholesale redesign, I think in, to any extent of, of the Route 114 corridor improvement project.
Okay, so very helpful, Aton, I'm going to move on here, I know I'm taking a lot of time. Jeff, if you could continue with the pictures in sequence and just quickly go through them, very, very helpful. But I do want to leave Aton with one comment, that resolving these type of issues, I think, is very important, not just to us, the board, but looking at the comments we're getting to the town. And as Jeff has pointed out, some of these traffic studies use rather technical language, which is important to get it right. This has to be translated into understandable language. What is the applicant doing to resolve these traffic issues? And explain it with real clarity. Um, we've been commenting on the need for clarity in a number of our meetings here. Uh, Jeff, over to you, and Aton, I'll, uh, hold off on other questions so Jeff can move along.
Okay, um, and Jeff, I'll, I'll have you can move on, but I do, there are two questions that, that I have that just, if we could address at the end. One, there was at the beginning of our discussion about traffic, um, uh, back and forth about the numbers used, the data used, the times used. I just want to confirm that after going back and forth between yourself and the applicant's engineer, that we're comfortable with all the data and times and everything that's used, that we're all comfortable with that, that it's appropriate. And then two, on, on what Peter said, kind of a conclusion that if these, if, if you can make it, if the suggestions that you've made are put in place and this project goes forward as is, what does that all mean in terms of traffic and acceptable additional traffic? What, it, where, where would we wind up if the suggestions that you made are adopted by the applicant and Mast DOT?
Sure, yeah, I'll, like you said, I can, um, kind of address those by way of a summary, um, at the end as well.
Great, thank you.
So now I, I believe, so if you, the next slide, I think is number 26 or page 26. So that's showing, again, we're still in the work weekday morning peak hour. So this is the Walsh Way intersection that will be created, so the, one of the main accesses into the project site that will be created and placed on a traffic signal control. So in the morning peak hour, you don't, you know, the queues are basically contained along the frontage of 114. So there's no, no real blockages or backups here that are of concern. The only thing I mentioned to the applicant is, is as they develop the site plan, this queuing needs to inform, uh, the layout of the, of the driveway. So that's something that they need to just, you know, the, the traffic engineer has done their trip estimates, they perform their capacity analysis. That resulted in some queuing that you see in the driveway. So now as the site plan gets developed, it needs to make sure that is, it, it addresses this queuing. You really don't want intersections or crossing locations within this queue, uh, in the site itself, because that would impede the ability for vehicles to be able to enter and exit potential access points close to 114. So that's something just needs to get carried over as the site plans are developed. I, I would mention as well, before we go to the next slide, they did include, we had asked them to include traffic moving between Merrimack College and, and the development project, they've done that. They've also included, um, time for pedestrian crossings, so specific. So specific times within the cycle of the traffic signal when traffic, all traffic would be stopped so pedestrians could cross. That's included in this analysis as well. So slide 27 is the indoor bypass intersection showing the queuing there again in the morning peak hour. The queues are not of concern at this location. It doesn't block any adjacent intersections. And all of the storage lanes or the left turn lanes, right turn lanes are able to be accessed. Slide 28 is the hillside road, same thing, weekday morning peak hour, no areas of concern on that, that page. Slide 29 is the stop and shop driveway. Again, no areas of concern. Number, page 30 is the Mill Road Willow Street intersection, same thing, morning peak hour, no areas of concern with respect to the queuing. Now, as we get to slide 31, now we're going from the morning peak hour to the evening peak hour, and we're looking at the same things in terms of queuing at intersections. The one thing I want to mention now is we're going through the evening peak hour. The volume of traffic on 114 as well as on the adjacent roadways is, is higher than it is. The flows are higher than what you see during the morning in almost all instances. And so what you're going to see is we look at these slides compared to the morning is the queues are longer. So looking at the Waverly Road intersection, this is on page 31 of the response. Now what you see is queuing on both legs of Waverly Road is, is longer. So now we've got instances where the queues on both legs of Waverly Road extend back so that you don't have the ability to actually get into the turn pockets up approaching 114. So again, we've suggested this is one of the intersections that the applicant, we've asked that they look at the ability to extend the two lane approaches on Waverly Road or two lanes as far back as they can so that we can get those vehicles actually up to the stop line at 114. So page 32 is the Eaglewood Shops. Again, no areas of concern with respect to the queuing there. The traffic is able to get into the turn pockets and so you don't see a lot of residual queuing in any of the turn pockets there or on the driveway itself. Page 33 is the Peters Street intersection. And again, you, we do see some queuing on Habrel Street, not so much on, on Peters Street. And the two lane approaches there both seem to be functioning fine. You do see that the queue on Route 114 starts to get back towards the indoor street intersection in this case, but not to the point, at least under the build condition where it extends into the intersection.
I ask you another question. Does both the no build and build condition in all of these aerials assume that the MassDOT project is completed?
The, the queuing, the underlying aerial photograph doesn't necessarily depict those improvements.
Okay, thank you.
So now page 34 is the indoor street 114 intersection. Again, you don't, you see the queuing happening on 114. It's not so pronounced on the indoor street approach during this time period, but you do see on the Elm Street approach, it's a little more pronounced on that, on that leg, but not so much on the indoor street. And again, that's just by way of the fact that at least during this time period, the, the volume of traffic on the indoor street approach is not as heavy heading on 114 towards Merrimack College. And, and that is really a function of the college related traffic, because you've got a heavy inflow of commuters in the morning, not so much during the evening commuter peak hour. And so that's why you see that dynamic of a little bit less traffic on the indoor street approach during the evening peak hour than what you see in the morning.
Jeff, I'm sorry I have to interrupt again. On page 34, I just, I've seen this in a couple of the slides. In most of these, the white 50% queue comes first from the intersection extending back along the road. But there's been a handful of examples where the black 95% queue flips.
Yeah, I think that's a typo. That's a typo. It should be reversed.
But it doesn't make any sense, does it?
No, that, that they should be reversed.
Okay. So that shows up maybe five or six times if, that could be dealt with because it's very confusing.
Yeah. So that they should be reversed because you're, you're right. It's just, it, yes, they should be reversed.
Thank you.
There are times when, just to, just to chime in there, there are times when Synchro, the program that we use to analyze it, does have the 50th being longer than the 95th. There is a very technical explanation of it. But that, but that does match the results that are in the analysis.
So now if we go to page 35, this, this was the, so this is when the Walsh Way intersection on the 114 northbound approach, you, you see it extends into the intersection with the indoor bypass. And so that was the, that was this time period is what I was mentioning, where queuing becomes an issue at the access point into the project site. So slide, page 36 is the indoor bypass intersection with 114. And so you, you see the queuing that exists there. There is enough storage because there's a long storage lanes on the bypass to be able to accommodate the queues. So this intersection is not, even though the queues are long, if they're able to get into the, the appropriate lanes to get up to the intersection itself. So page 37 is the hillside road intersection. Again, once you get south of the indoor bypass, the intersections have plenty of capacity. And so you see the queuing not getting to a point where it's really causing any issues for, for getting into either blocking or getting into the turn lanes. 38 is the stop and shop driveway. Again, no, no issues with respect to the queuing. And the next page 39 is Mill Road Willow Street, the, the same thing. There's no, no blockages there. And then the next set of slides are the same thing. So page 40 starts with the Saturday time period. So this is Saturday midday peak hour. Traffic volumes are generally lower than they were during the weekday time periods. So Waverly Road, you, you see the queuing, but not to the extent that it's really causing any, any issues there. It's lower or shorter than the morning peak hour. So 41 is the Eaglewood Shops. Again, no, no issues with respect to the queuing there. So now looking at the Peters Street intersection on page 42, you see the same thing. There's no, no blockages there with the queues. They're all able to get up to the intersection. And you see, you know, the queues along 114 are much shorter. Indoor street, same thing. The queues are shorter than what we see during the weekdays on, on the approaches there. Now I'm on page 44. I mean, this is, so now we're looking at the Walsh Way intersection. So you see the queues, you know, at least from the driveway, looking at the build condition on the right hand side, it get back, it gets back towards the bypass, but not to the extent that there's any blockages that take place there. 45 is the indoor bypass. Again, shorter queues than what you see during the weekday at that intersection, no blockages. And then the next set of slides, you know, the hillside road intersection on 46, stop and shop driveway on 47, Willow Street Mill Road on 48. So that, that, that's the conclusion of the, of the queuing diagrams there. And you, again, as you get south of the bypass, there's plenty of capacity. So what you really see is it's really the intersections as you get closer to the project site where you'd expect that there'd be more pronounced impact from the development and, and that's, that's what you see there. So, you know, as we looked at all of those, the queuing diagrams and took into consideration the, the additional traffic from the project, the enhancements that we've asked the applicant to work on with MassDOT basically involved, as we mentioned at, at Waverly Road to increase the queue storage. So try to provide as long of a two lane approach as you can on those approaches. The same thing on indoor street to, to accommodate additional queuing. So pull that two lane approach further back away from 114 so that people can, the vehicles can actually get up to the intersection and they get processed by the traffic signal. At Walsh Way, we've asked that they consider providing a right turn lane to get into their site. So that would be on 114 northbound that they give consideration for that. That will get some of the traffic off of 114, get it up to the signal and then move it into the site. So we've asked for them to, to consider doing that as well. Now the signals themselves, so one of the ways to address the frequency of currents of the blockages of the intersections along the corridor and to improve traffic flow is to implement what's known as adaptive traffic signal control. And Mastot may be doing this. It's a little difficult to model. But if they're not, it's something that we've suggested that the applicant discuss implementing with Mastot. What adaptive traffic signal control does, it's, it's basically, it's an upgrade from coordinated traffic signals. So coordinated traffic signals, what they're basically doing is trying to, basically you group all of the traffic together in a big platoon. And then you move that platoon of traffic from one intersection to the next intersection on a green light. So essentially, once you get into that green band is what it's called, you just move from one intersection to the next on green lights. And that queue that gets processed by these traffic signals, the idea is you, you don't introduce more traffic between intersections that can physically be processed. So in theory, that coordination should be able to, if you turn from a left turn from the indoor bypass onto 114 and you get into that coordinated cycle, you should be able to get all the way through to the signal at Waverly without stopping. So that whole queue in that left turn lane, if you look at it, if you're back of that queue and you make it through that green light, you should just make it along the entire corridor without stopping. So that's the way a coordinated system is, is designed to work. Once you introduce an adaptive traffic signal system, what that does is it, it basically requires the installation of additional sensors on not only the approaches of the intersection, which is typically what you'd have at a signal anyways, but also on the departures. And what that adaptive signal system does is it's measuring inflow and outflow from each of the signals. And it adapts the timing of the traffic signal every single cycle to the volume of traffic that not only arrives, but it is processed. So the signal's counting, how many cars do I have waiting to get through the signal? How many cars that I actually process? And if I didn't process all the cars that I counted arriving, then I know in the next cycle, I need to change the traffic signal timing to get the new arrivals plus the arrivals I didn't process through that traffic signal. So it adapts. And, and so the adaptive system addresses those issues where you've got dynamics in the traffic flow, but also those blockages we saw of intersections. Because what the adaptive signal does is it knows, it basically measures traffic. So it knows when those blockages occurs, adjusts the timing so that it doesn't occur on the next signal cycle. So in real time is making changes as the, as the signals are operating. So that's the most advanced traffic signal system. It is being used throughout the Commonwealth on arterials such as this, where you've got items like the college, where you've got changes in the traffic flows that might accommodate during changes in classes, commuter traffic, things like that. This system is physically measuring ins and outs on the entire corridor and is adjusting the timing to account for the actual demand of traffic on the roadway, which is not something that a, a coordinated system can necessarily do, because it doesn't have, it's kind of missing those, that data piece of inflow and outflow, and then making an adjustment based on that. So we've suggested that the applicant discuss with MassDOT to the extent that they're not installing adaptive signal control. That adaptive signal control be installed at the key intersections. And so the key intersections that we've defined here would really be at Peter Street, at the, at indoor street Elm Street, at Walsh Way and at the indoor bypass. Because we looked at those queuing diagrams, which you can see is the dynamic of how those intersections all operate together is really determining what the real capacity of this corridor is to accommodate the additional traffic. So that would, that would address these backups that we're seeing as a result of the queuing and the interrelationship between the operation of the signal and the backups through adjacent intersections and allow for the traffic signals to time themselves and adjust themselves to account for actual flow of traffic along the corridor. So we've asked that the applicant discuss that with MassDOT to the extent that they have not incorporated adaptive control as a part of the 114 corridor improvements. The other, the other items that we've asked them to look at is, is kind of a, a more traditional approach, which is reducing the actual physical demand of traffic at this site. And really the way to do that is a comprehensive transportation demand management program, which we really have, you know, there's really two pieces to that that's critical. The first thing is to make sure that you've got available resources and that they're convenient to the people to use. So if it's not convenient, they're not going to use it. So that's, that's the first thing. So that needs to be accomplished, because as we noted, you really only have the Warrior Shuttle that's open to students. But it's not really something that employees and non-students of the, of the redevelopment project would have access to. So that brings to really needing to get the Merrimack Regional Transit Authority to service the site or for the applicant in consultation with Merrimack College to operate, you know, a private shuttle or open the Warrior Shuttle up to more than just students. And so those are things that need to be considered. And then the second part of an effective transportation demand management program, once you provided the resources, is to try to make it financially available to the users of the, of the service. So what you build into a program is either financial incentives, either, you know, providing a stipend for people that use the, the service itself or offering things so that the employees of the project would basically have access to commuter savings programs, so that you could use pre-tax dollars to be able to buy, you know, a transit pass or to be used towards some type of an alternative commuting mode. So there's various ways that you can do that, but those are the, basically the, kind of the pieces that really need to be put in place to make it be very effective. So if we're able to, you know, improve capacity through some of these traffic signal timing and maybe some physical road improvements, that's one piece. The other piece would reduce the amount of traffic that's generated by the project. That's done through transportation demand management measures. So we've asked that the applicant, that, that, that would be something that would be incorporated as a part of the project itself. So in terms of the capacity analysis and everything that we had looked at, those are kind of where we ended up. So that there is the ability to implement additional improvements to be able to accommodate the added traffic demands from this project. And those additional amenities would be those things that we talked about, some potential widening of roadways so that the queues are reduced, importantly installing that adaptive traffic signal technologies. And then lastly, reducing the amount of actual traffic that's generated by the project. So we've asked, you know, those are things that could be put in place as a part of the project itself. Again, nothing, they're all things that are under the control of the applicant, certainly things that would require approval from MassDOT, but nothing that would require substantial or, or major revisions to MassDOT's corridor improvement project. And the applicant can, you know, fund, potentially fund those improvements as enhancements rather than things that would require redesign of Mastot's project. So, so last thing.
Go ahead, Jeff. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. So the last things that we looked at is probably some of the questions that both that we had. And one of the things that we thought was very important beyond these capacity constraints was the timing of the Mastot project in relation to this project. And so the applicant has updated kind of the schedule, which I don't think has changed much from what you've heard before. So the timing of the Mastot improvement project is they're expecting commencement in 2023, which is consistent with the year for which the funding has been committed as a part of the transportation improvement program. So the tip list. So this is allocated, or this project is allocated for funding in 2023. And so that's what the expectation is in terms of the way that this would advance. And so one of the things that we keep mentioning is that the analyses that have been done are, are basically the project with the Mastot improvements. So it's, it's assuming that those things occur simultaneously or that the Mastot improvements are, are in place before the project is actually constructed and would add traffic to, to the roadway network. You know, obviously the applicant doesn't have control over what MassDOT's schedule is going to be for constructing these improvements. So one of the things that we did do as a part of this current response is to kind of outline a procedure that could take place from the town's perspective. To the extent that the applicant would like to advance the project before Mastot has completed his improvements, there's certainly ways to condition the project to ensure that, I think primarily, that access can be provided to the site in a safe manner, inefficient manner. And that the project doesn't create any undue impacts that aren't mitigated offsite. And so we've, we've basically laid out a, a potential condition whenever it's appropriate that the town could use to have the applicant demonstrate that when they want to come in for a phase of the project, that they would demonstrate to the town sufficient capacity, so a sufficiency test. And we've defined what sufficiency would mean and the way that the applicant would demonstrate to that to the board. And so that would allow the project to move forward independent of the Mastot project. And the town would be able to understand, you know, how much traffic is going to be generated, that there is sufficient capacity. And this is typically what you do for any other project. And then the applicant would come in and do that for each phase, to the extent that the Mastot improvements were not in place. And that's kind of a, a fallback measure and a condition the town could put in place to ensure that your, as the applicant comes forward with Um that's kind of a a fallback measure and a condition the town could put in place to ensure that your, as the applicant comes forward with phasing of the project. Uh that you're basically checking off and the applicants demonstrating that there's sufficient capacity on the transportation infrastructure. Uh to support the phase that they want to uh advance as a part of the project. So we've, we've outlined a potential condition and it's probably, you know, premature, but at least just getting that thought process. And answering a question of, well, what if the Mastodot Improvement Project uh doesn't go forward or doesn't go forward in a timeframe that dovetails with this project? What we've laid out is a process that the town could consider uh for allowing the project to go move forward in phases, essentially uh with sufficient backup. And um information so that the town would be comfortable that there, there is capacity to accommodate the project. So that, that's a probably a long summary of our review of the latest information that the applicant submitted. Um and then just, I guess, just to circle back on the last couple of items that the chair had asked me to address. So uh we did very early on in reviewing the original traffic study was number one. Uh to make sure that the uh the the analysis conditions, so as we're looking at morning and evening peak hours. Uh that the applicant, in fact, analyzed the peak conditions on the roadway. Um and so we did verify that and there's, there was two approaches that the applicant could take. Uh the first is uh look at the individual peak hours or peaks at each of the intersections that they looked at. So the intersections may not all peak at the same time. Um and so what you can do is a worse absolute worst case condition is you look at the individual peak hours of each of the intersections. And that's your analysis's condition. The other approach, and this is the approach the applicant took, was to look at what is the peak hour? If I looked at all of the intersections in Route one fourteen as a corridor, because these are coordinated traffic signal systems. When does Route one fourteen peak the road itself? And establish that as the peak condition that we're going to evaluate irrespective of when the intersections peak. So when is the peak traffic volume hour on Route one fourteen? So that's the approach the applicant took. We, in order to validate that, we looked at the individual intersection peak hours. And what we found was that the roadway corridor peaked within about fifteen minutes, thereabouts of the uh individual intersection peaks. And that if you looked at the difference in traffic volumes at the intersections as well as on the roadway. Uh there wasn't a substantive change that would occur if you used either approach. And the fact that the signals are interconnected and coordinated. And I explained the way that it operates, which is basically is trying to move traffic as efficiently as possible along Route one fourteen. Analyzing the roadway peak is more important in this case. But if you even took the worst case approach, it wouldn't change anything with respect to how the the um analyses were undertaken as a part of the project. So we agree with the the approach the applicant took and that the peak hours in the morning, evening and Saturday. Uh are representative of a peak design condition on the roadway, so it's an appropriate analysis condition for the project. And now I'm forgetting some of the other things the chair asked me, so if if um you want to circle back with those questions, I can, I can answer.
Kind of an overall conclusion, so.
Yeah, um. Yeah, the the overall conclusion that is really that um. You know, as you look at those queuing diagrams, again, you don't see that there's a significant impact from from the project. Um and that's consistent with the findings of the traffic study. So the areas where there were pronounced impacts were basically at the Andover Street intersection, the Walsh Way intersection. And at the bypass intersection, and that's consistent with the queuing diagrams. So we have recommended approaches the applicant can take to address those impacts. And again, what we really want to see is that the amount of traffic that's introduced between those three intersections doesn't exceed the capacity. Of the intersections or the Route one fourteen quarter, so that you don't have backups. Because as soon as those backups happen through adjacent intersections, it's that cascading effect. That can be addressed through the adaptive signal control. To the extent that the adaptive signal control or the other enhancements we suggested, if those are all implemented. There will be sufficient capacity and the impacts from this project will be mitigated. And the traffic will flow along the corridor in an efficient manner, you will not see the backups that are predicted. So that, that's, that's the overall conclusion that we have um is that. There are issues with respect to queuing, but they're not unsolvable. And the solutions to those problems are not adding additional travel lanes on Route one fourteen. It it's really managing the traffic better, reducing the amount of traffic that could be generated by this project. Um and then that adaptive traffic signal control, all within the control of things that the applicant can do without significant changes to the Route one fourteen corridor.
Okay, that, that, that was kind of what I was looking for. Um and it seems like some of these things are important to talk with now regarding the proposal in general. And then some of the details, conditions like you mentioned would be appropriated a um more at a special permit. Um I do want to talk more with the applicant about some of the um transportation features. I'd like the idea of, you know, shuttle bus, you know. One of the biggest things is people going to like just the grocery store, right? Stop and shop market back, that's a lot of trips. So if we had, I know when I lived in um in Arlington in Virginia, I lived in an apartment building and it was on a main road. But there was a shuttle bus that went every half an hour or an hour, you know, to go to the grocery store, to go to the local train station. Something along those lines would really save a lot of trips if it was just available to people. Um so things like that that we can talk about in the future, but I think the overall, your details regarding traffic. And then the overall conclusions are really helpful to us as a board, so. I'm I'm good on my questions, we'll go to others, Peter.
Yeah, I have one other question. Uh Jeff, can you please just refresh our memory from last meeting? We had a fairly long discussion then about the delta between vehicle trips before the project and after the project. Just summarize those for us again.
Yes, on the, on the daily basis, the projects expected in terms of the net increase in traffic. And and I I do want to just preface it with, you know, this, this assumes that they don't do any of those things with the shuttle bus or there were things like that. So they, they, their analysis is conservative in that it assumed no one's going to walk, no one's going to bike. And no one's going to use public transportation. I mean, granted, that public transportation, other than back and forth between Meramec Colleges is um really not available at this time. But absent all of those things, the predicted increase on a daily basis is was twelve thousand five hundred and thirty six vehicle trips. And that's two-way traffic, so it's um you'd have a little some six thousand two hundred and fifty-ish vehicles entering and and the same amount um exiting. So that's the the net increase in in daily numbers during this.
Uh Jeff, can you give us the existing number and the future number so we can see how the delta was derived? What's, what is that, the one of the two entered numbers?
Yep, so the the existing number was three thousand two hundred and four. And the new was fifteen thousand seven hundred and forty.
If I could just uh just correct those in our latest um response, we had updated those. Because we have the clarification that our existing numbers were based on driveway counts as opposed to the I T numbers. So we have our existing um daily number is four thousand four eighty eight. And then our um total net trips of fifteen nine seventy three and the delta was eleven thousand four eighty five.
Thank you, Matt. And and we, I did review those numbers and I do agree with what what Matt had said.
And Jeff, can you just translate the uh in plain English, what's the difference between the driveway thing and whatever the acronym reference was?
So the way that the, so they did physical actual counts at the driveways. And so there's a couple of ways to estimate what that increase in traffic is. Um and I think the approach that they had used earlier, and this was something they corrected. Um resulted in in slightly lower traffic volumes. Uh it was not off by too much, but the new way that they did it, because they didn't have twenty-four hour driveway counts at each of the access points. Is they looked at what the pers- so they have peak out, the peak hour counts they have are real traffic counts at the driveways. They needed to estimate the daily number. The, the way that they've gone about doing it now, which I agree with, is they've looked at for similar residential communities. The percent of the daily number that occurs during the peak hours. So for residential projects, about ten percent of the peak hour traffic. Or ten percent of the daily traffic occurs during the peak hour. So if you took the peak hour traffic and it and and increased it by a hundred and ten percent roughly, that's, that's what your daily number would look like. So you'd expand, you'd take your peak hour number and expand it to arrive at what your daily number is. Because if you know what percentage of the traffic, of the daily traffic occurs during the peak hour. You can figure out what your peak hour or your daily number is, that's the.
Alright, thank you. And Matt, do you mind repeating your new numbers?
Sure, the existing was four thousand four eighty eight. And the net, you just want the net increase was eleven thousand four eighty five.
Your total?
Uh fifteen thousand nine seventy three.
Okay, thank you.
So now during each of the peak hours, that's when we, we were looking at those queue diagrams. Um the project, and I don't think these numbers have changed, Matt, but you can correct me if they have. The morning peak hour, the net increase in traffic was six hundred and ninety-three vehicles. The, the evening peak hour was eight hundred and fifty-six vehicles, net new. And then the Saturday midday peak hour, the net new was eight hundred and seventy-five vehicles. So that's net new traffic on Route one fourteen.
I have slightly different numbers, the 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 numbers from the traffic study, six hundred and thirty-one AM, seven thirty-seven PM and eight ninety-seven Saturday.
Okay, we'll, we'll get the final ones, but I think that gives us the uh the gist of it.
To what you are defense, there is a lot of columns in this table and a lot of things that have to add up to each other, so it's uh sometimes tough to juggle.
Okay, uh any other members of the board have any comments, questions regarding traffic?
Yes, uh my last one, I know I said the last one was the last one, Aton or Jean. And I think we had asked previously that the applicant add the uh traffic. Vehicle trip deltas uh to that, what do we call it, the program summary document, Jean, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, that was a metric we're going to add to the bottom of it.
Okay, and we'll uh be able to get that?
Mike, I trust we can.
Yeah, yes, we wanted, we wanted to get through the peer review and get through um obviously all of the the vetting of the numbers, but yes, we can now add that.
Great, okay, anyone else? Speak now or hold your peace until the next meeting. Okay, alright, so let's move, uh Jean, any? No, okay, um let's move to public outreach plan transparency, is that the next thing we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, great, Jim.
Okay, uh and this is, this is Mike, so I, I'm like, I'll just uh jump in and just, you know, briefly, you know, state that we're. You know, we're making a really concerted effort to reach everybody. And I think, you know, we'll, I'll let Greg on our team speak to the specifics, but we've reached a lot of people so far. We're continuing to reach people every single day, both people who live directly adjacent to the, to the, to the site. People in the surrounding neighborhoods and people throughout the town. We haven't reached everybody yet, but we are going to. Um so, you know, I I think we've made some really good progress, we've talked to many, many people. Um and we've heard a lot of thoughts and 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 a lot of good thoughts, a lot of concerns, and I think that that's a, that's all good. Um so to that end, I will turn it over to Greg, who can speak to some of the specifics of what we have recently accomplished. And a sort of look ahead of what we're going to be doing in uh in the coming weeks. Um we do have some, we do have some, some meetings set up with the neighbors. Um we're trying to do, we're, we certainly are doing them virtually. We're looking into the possibility of doing, doing some in-person, you know, socially distanced to the best um extent that we can. But we really are making every effort to reach everyone um that that cares. So Greg, do a quick update for the board?
Sure, well, I know it's getting late and I appreciate everyone's uh time. And uh also appreciate this board's, you know, keen interest in making sure the community is involved. We shared that, as Mike said, that that sort of principle that the more the community is involved, the better the project's going to be. Uh since I last updated you last month, uh you know, we've contacted more than two thousand people in the community. Mike said that that includes our neighbors, that includes um direct abutters in the Berkeley Road area and Quail Run area. As well as a little bit further away. We've tried to reach out to a number of different stakeholder groups, trying to get a broad perspective. About the, we get different views about the project. As this board can appreciate probably more than the most, um this is a complex project and planning is a complex process. So it's, these conversations are long conversations. So surely wish we had reached out to more than two thousand people, but between. Having to roll up our sleeves, taking out a landscape and buffer planning and sitting in someone's kitchen socially distanced or. You know, utilizing Zoom and doing conference calls. And then throw in the holidays in there, you know, we're, we're continuing to push forward. I think one of the measurements which we can continue to provide you updates, you know, our website is um. When I, when we wrote our update to you guys, I think we were at about fifteen hundred visitors to the website in the last week alone. Uh we've actually had another five hundred visitors, so we're, we're pushing two thousand folks who have been to the website. And that's a direct result of all the conversations we've had in the community. And the website's been a great tool to also collect feedback from uh neighbors, stakeholders, folks from all over. I think I I looked through a lot of the comments that were submitted to the planning board. And you have direct abutters and you have folks who are pretty far from the site. So we, we appreciate everyone taking the time uh to speak with us. We appreciate all the stakeholder groups, a lot of them have helped spread the word. Um posting the website on various Facebook pages, uh sharing and announcing it at a civic organization meetings. So it's been really helpful. We uh we've learned a lot, but we've heard, you know, going all the way back to when the property was a turkey farm. Uh and and you know, how that was like living next to a turkey farm. We've heard from people about, you know, their concerns about visual and sound impacts. Uh we've heard, you know, we've sat down with folks from the Downtown Association, the Merchant Association, that how we work closer with, with them. At the end of the day, as Mike said, and as anyone can imagine, you know, we've heard a lot of different opinions on what the vision for the project should should be. But I would say unanimously, we're hearing everyone thinks it's time for a change at Royal Crest. Uh that is unanimous, so that's been very helpful to hear firsthand. Uh we're going to continue pushing for for outreach. We have a, a meeting with the neighbors, uh the director partners for next week. We're in um constant contact with them regularly texting and calling and checking in. I I think it was mentioned earlier in the evening about collecting feedback from the community and sort of creating um some way to organize that. We have a running spreadsheet, so every time we speak with somebody, uh we're taking notes and we're identifying what the issues are. Um both positive and concerns, so we have a running spreadsheet, we're happy to share it with you guys. So you can kind of see um where the issues are sort of focused on. And uh. Let me see what else if I, if I missed anything. I, I think that pretty much covered all of it. I don't know if the planning board has any questions or any suggestions, we're, we're definitely open to that.
Okay, uh this is Aton, I have a couple of things, Greg, uh thank you. Um so one, can you share with us the website address? As well as who is a good, as well as good contact information for people uh to reach out? And then I'd also ask you to put that information in an email um that you could send to Jean and that we could share amongst our. Networks and things like that, so that there's a, so that we are increasing the ability for people to reach out to you, should they have questions or comments?
Sure, so the website is new N E W Royal Crest. Dot info, I N F O. And um hat, and the best contact would be myself, Greg with one G, G R E G, Lane, L A N E.
And best way to contact you?
Uh you can contact, folks in the community can contact me anyway. I'm getting uh texts right now as we're talking from neighbors uh wishing that, you know, that they had their voice heard. Um and I expressed to them that I'll be in their kitchen tomorrow morning. Um so I'll give you my cell phone and feel free to give it out to anybody and contact me at any point. It's a funny area code, so Aton, you'll probably recognize it, because I heard you were, you lived in Arlington. It's a funny area code, so Aton, you'll probably recognize it because I heard you were, you lived in Arlington. So did I twenty years ago. So I have the seven oh three area code for my cell phone. Three hundred seventy-four fifteen.
Excellent, I was there two thousand two to two thousand five.
We overlapped a couple of years.
Okay, so I'm glad to hear about it. Again, I would really again stress. One of the things we're hearing is that people are just getting information about this now, so continue to reach out. Please also continue to reach out. I hear a lot about abutters, but please reach out to the people who live at Royal Crest. I just want, I, I don't want, they should not be forgotten i- in this as well.
Absolutely.
We're moving their, changing their homes and situations, so they're all residents of North Andover, so they need to be. A, a big part of this as well. And so just keep doing that. Because the last thing I want to hear when we come to a public hearing, if we do, or to a town meeting, is that people don't have noticed. So keep this up. Please send an email to Jean with the contact information so that we can also spread that on, on, on our end.
Aton, I just wanted to add, sorry to interrupt, but on the website, we actually added a feature, two features. One was about two or three weeks ago. There's actually a page or tab on the, on the website where you can request a chat. And so you can contact us, anybody in the community can contact us at any point by visiting the website and just filling that out. So that's one. And then two, a feature we just added this morning, which is. There'll be, when you visit the website, there'll be a pop-up works, which says if you want to keep in contact and get updates, please add your email address. And then those folks will get regular updates. So those are two additional ways.
Okay, and are you, you folks looking at the comments that we received that are made part of the public record?
Yes, we absolutely are. So we are, we are reviewing those and we'll be contacting each and every one of those people. Either individually or if they prefer in groups, but we will be reaching out to each and every one of them.
Okay, and as you see themes developing, I know you're keeping track of it in a spreadsheet, but when it comes time to, you know, talking about those, it would be helpful. You know, if changes have been made, if you think the changes aren't appropriate, you know, regarding things that, that, that. If we could kind of address those topically, you know, when we start going through those, that would be helpful as well.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, anyone else have comments they want to make about the outreach and transparency? Again, I think you've heard us stress it and, you know, as time goes on, it will tell how successful it is.
Yeah, right.
Aton, if I could just make a comment. Mike, I know I send them periodically as I receive them and update the packet, but. I just would caution you, given the activity today, I certainly wasn't able to send all of them to you, so just. The agenda links to the comments, you just might want to double check those as well.
Yes, I, I certainly will. I did, I did see and, and review them already, but we will, we'll make sure that we get all of them. And I'll confirm it with you, Jean.
Okay. Okay, I guess then maybe next and last topic for the evening is where do, where are we going next?
Yeah, you know, I wanted to, I, I just wanted to touch on that. So, so a big milestone for us was the completion of the fiscal impact study. So that has been submitted to the town for peer review and that peer review is, is occurring right now. So it is our hope, it is our hope that the peer review will be completed within the next couple of weeks. And that we will be able to present the findings of that study to you at the next, at your next meeting. So we're working through that with, with the town, but, but that's what our hope is and what we've been working towards.
Okay, so that would be fantastic because I know a lot of the questions that have come in, rightfully so, have asked about. What benefits do we get from this? What costs do we have with this? What are there going to be increase in school children services, police, fire, water, everything? So I think if we're able to, and I don't want to just take, it's great that your impact study is done, but we need to have it reviewed. And have both of those. And if we could, if we have both of those for the next meeting. Then I think the meeting after that would be a great time to address. Comments that have come in, because more comments may come after those reports come in and we'll actually have hopefully some. Potential answers to a lot of these questions. So that would kind of be my idea of a calendar, hopefully at the next meeting, if everything's available, of going through the fiscal. Talking about that, asking questions about that. And then the meeting after that, we'll start taking up. Kind of live questions and things that have come in from the public as well as questions that the board has. I think that's, would be the general plan.
Yeah, yeah, we're in agreement with that.
Okay, and then, yeah, I mean, which makes sense too, because I think hopefully maybe sometime. In March or early April, if we've gotten a little bit further in the zoning, if we got a little further. We can, you know, start actually maybe doing a, maybe we can do a site visit at that point. That might work in the calendar. Okay. Board members' comments about that timeline? Okay, sounds like everyone loves it. Okay. Okay, I think that was really helpful today, everybody. Thank you.
So he's really, you know, I've had a resident kind of emailing me a few questions throughout that discussion. I've responded to them. My sense is he's just asking me questions, but I have a clarifying email out to him. If any of them were intended to go to the planning board, then I will certainly include them in the next packet. But I will talk to them and, and try to clarify this process.
Yeah, that is one thing, good thing to note, you know, if, if any point people want to ask questions of, of myself or of Jean, you could email us. But just let us know if, if, try to, if you can, be clear in the emails, is this a question for the board? That you want us to be part of the record that we all discuss, or is it just a kind of a one-off question for us individually? Which we can handle as well, just let us know.
Yeah, that would be very helpful because I, I incur that often.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you, everyone. So that was really. A lot of progress tonight, so we'll continue until February second. Is that the date? Yeah, February second.
Great, good night, everybody. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, can we get a motion to approve the minutes from January fifth?
So moved?
Moved by Mr. Simons. Anyone else still here? Just a second?
I don't think I can second.
No.
We can carry him to the next if not.
Let's do that, I think everyone.
This is Aaron, I'll second.
Okay, Aaron seconds. Who's here? John, you're here, right?
Yeah, yes.
I, I vote yes. Aaron?
Yes.
Anyone else here? No, it's a majority anyway. All right, we're good. Motion approved three, nothing. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
So both?
Motion made by Mr. Simon. Aaron, want to second that? No, you just want to stick around?
No.
Now we can.
Okay, second, yeah, I don't know what happened.
All right, John, you want to adjourn? Aaron? I also want to adjourn. Kelly, you want to adjourn?
Yes, please.
Okay, good night, everybody.